Back to making work.
You can do it.
You can do it. You can do it. We will be here for one, one day. It has been one year ago.
I guess we can say.
Say what man?
I'm sorry.
Unfortunately, I think we got good breakfast.
How you doing?
This week.
You all right? I've been trying to make this look about city.
Even on Saturday. If you guys.
Yeah, we have this.
You gotta make up when the weather's bad, actually. I would say there's a lot of concrete down there.
There were dirt, yeah.
A lot of the footprints on that one.
No, I didn't put it there. Uh.
Oh, yeah.
That was.
Oh, do it, do it. I, I have.
Hey, I'm talking to my colleagues. I want to give your problems. That's a 25 mile an hour road down through there. The dirt road going. Dirt road we're doing. All like hit trucks to, to fit. Your drivers are very respectful speaking. Maybe because those trucks are so evil.
Yeah, they are, yeah.
They're very.
Well, right here.
Going all the way.
Jerry, talk. Behave.
That's mine.
Yes, it is. I thought that you know, not, not really talk.
Yeah.
That's who we talk. You can do that.
I'm not good at that. It's not good. I don't know.
Now I'm trying to get, get this.
Sorry, I'm running.
We have a problem getting out. I'm a little, every time you get into the, um, just kind of getting in my nerves and. I don't like saying that. It's okay.
When you, when you hear the word.
Yeah, I'm finishing now, no. Look. Ready when he come. Yeah.
Uh, it's bigger, he was in a hallway.
But I already got that thing on, on. Oh, yeah.
He was in a hallway.
Okay.
The, the, the.
Oh, I do.
The other two gallons. I think that's it.
Well, get you from coming.
A girl or boy.
Yeah. I believe it's a real. So great. But this is the power of that. We got, we got, we got. What could you all remember?
Yeah.
What I can give. What I got to give. More than I'm worth. You have to. Don't forget.
First Baptist. First Baptist. First Baptist. You know her she name, dude. Come on, sir. Oh, yeah. Oh, right. You're doing good.
I must give it to her. Good. Okay. Okay. All right, I got it, yeah. How you doing?
Good. I'm good. How are you? How you doing?
Well, how are you, ma'am?
I'm good, everything. I'm sorry. Jeff, Jay, Jeff, 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 Jeff. I said.
It was proof. All right. Sure. You know my. Hey. I want to. This is one of. They. Guys, everybody now on sound off your devices. Turn them off. So we want to services as we develop the business itself. Sound off your devices, turn them off. Thank you. This work session of the Southern State Council is here at our call's work. Time is approximately six o'clock P M. Welcome to tonight's council work session. At this time, we ask Councilor Jimison to please offer us a word of education.
Yeah, Scott. On my, uh, list at the end of the day, some. There is. I created. I'm. I'm going. Thank you for the merit of the day. For me, that's a shout. So I don't think that we can work with them. It's nice to have them still for. Do you know that?
Amen. Thank you so much, Councilor Jimison. At this time, let's all stand with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. It may be seen. At this time, I have a roll call of all council members that are present. Council President Young, present. Councilman Harrell.
Here.
Councilwoman Kristi Thomas. Councilman Carmichael.
Present.
Councilwoman James. Councilman Randolph. Councilman Jimison.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Jamie Thomas.
Present.
And Councilman Jim Johnson.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for your responses. We'll move on with our agenda. The first item on our agenda for the evening, our citizens' request to the council. Uh, we just want to remind everyone that we have an aggressive agenda for the evening. We have a lot of items to go through, so we'll be very strict with our time. Uh, our citizen's request, you have three to five minutes. Uh, it's nothing personal, but at the conclusion of your five minutes, you rule in the word time. So please keep that in mind and along with the hands of the Southern City Council. At this time, our first citizen's request is Ms. Emily Reed, and she's here to discuss.
Good evening.
Good evening.
First of all, I would like to thank the council members, mayor, biggest staff, everyone who are about. You don't get to leave it. I want to talk to you a little bit about my, um, patent that I have going on. My name is Emily Mcgillan Reed, and I've been a citizen of Selma for 35 years. I'm a graduate of Selma High School, spoke to all the community. I come before this today to request assistance for my city as I represent the city of Selma in the second annual Miss Cool Figure Patent of Alabama. The patent will take place on Blue Moon Hill, 2012, too. At Detroit Davis Theater in the Thoroughbury Department. My platform is children's mental health. And we all know that our children today are our future leaders, our future politicians, doctors, lawyers, teachers, and what have. And we don't support their mental health right now, that is leaving a period to our. My journey does require financial assistance, which some I've already paid out. However, there is further assistance needed in reference to ticket sales and monetary donations to assist me with being successful on that day. Once again, I ask for our city's support to expand the possibilities to our children, especially full figure girls, teens, and adults that otherwise cannot see themselves as queens. Thank you.
Thank you so much for the presentation. Y'all, thank you for keeping the minute of time. Excellent presentation. Um, first of all, congratulations on your presentation for seven hours. All right, this time of council, are there any questions or comments for Ms. Reed while we have her in presence? Are there any questions? Well, Ms. Reed, we thank you for offering this presentation and letting us know about this very important event. How do you get that date of that?
It will be June 25th, 2022.
And it's been a long time.
At Detroit Davis Theater, and I also have some letters that I can. This has all the information that provides that day is more of my information and also the relationship.
Okay, thank you. You can leave that information with us. They're very helpful. And I'm sure, I don't try to speak for everyone, but I'm quite certain that everyone wishes you the best.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to our next speaker for the evening. Uh, we'll hear from Ms. Cynthia Perkins regarding the Brown's Building Restoration. Ms. Cynthia Perkins.
Okay.
Okay, you all can come on up.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I appreciate opportunity to send. Although and resolution to you for your consideration. Um, I would like to read it quickly and then, then, then. Want to, uh, we need to answer. She's got to be at once.
Can you introduce yourselves? I don't know, I don't even, okay, all of you introduce yourselves. Now, who you all are?
I'm, you know, I'm a women, the, uh, dinosaur. I'm, uh, and I'm born and reared and, uh, educated and, uh, come back and work with the city and came in, finally spoke of it, asked about state and nationally and still.
Good evening, I'm Mark O'Toole. I'm.
Thank you, Perkins.
Go ahead and proceed.
By living meaning, I'm concerned that we, uh, concerned citizen. Uh, have augmented by Lord's spectrum of concern parties. Recognize the worth and value of the Brown facility to the citizens of Selma. And we ask for the transfer of ownership of the old Steve Brown Bill to the city of Selma. And it's status to be publicly owned, so. As publicly owned and restoration of the ground wire as a community project allows what us community want, which leads to the building of a public and restoration of the facility as a community project. It's an opportunity for the citizens to do the same as the community as a pro own project. And public ownership of the community restoration. And a project restored allows the citizens of the community to restore, redevelop, and retain the bill while it's given to set a community worth and value. And community ownership of the product. Of the facility poses no environmental risk. And environmental study has been done and showed facility clear and free of health hazards and risk. And a community owned facility where community based organizations can utilize it for the right of services, not. It provided and servicing that are provided in limited area, included but not limited to financial literacy, artistic skill, minimum membership, homeownership, et cetera. The city, Selma Council, authorized this transfer of ownership of the ground wire to the city of Selma in collab, collaborating with Selma housing authority. So that citizens of their life are a good faith effort to provide for the restoration, education provided needed and non duplicative services through a non non project and to house historic immobility of Selians to share the legacy of self determination and contributed to the city to present and future generation. He is what we love, honestly, the Brown. So to citizens and on the project exists in both sides. The city of Selma for his gesture of faith in his citizens and citizens' age issue of way to do the city for the opportunity for Selma help and restoring the other of the community. And this is a group of citizens.
All right, thank you so much. Council of this hour, any questions or comments? We'll start with, uh, Councilwoman Thomas and then go to Councilor Jimison.
Of course, please. Um, this one. Uh, we just, we just received your resolution and, um, we're getting ready about there. There are some courses, but not, not by now. I can do a little more research on before I agree to this, to the resolution. That's it. I know that's not speaking.
No, not.
Crime that you can use or put into an accident of this.
Yes, ma'am, and that's why we here, why y'all want you. We want y'all to look at it and to determine if this is something that you all have the desire to work with us as a, uh, group of citizens. Uh, you know, I do a lot of research on the history of Selma. Does anybody recognize one of these bitches? Who is that?
Jackie Robinson.
Jackie Robinson. Jackie Robinson came here in the dedication of this bill. I got other artists. I did, it's, 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 it's. I go back and search all the newspapers. I have some of the data blow y'all on that.
Okay, let's go to Councilor Jimison. So then Councilor.
Let us know, we are through if there's no question.
All right, Councilor Jimison asked, and then Councilor Johnson. Great, Councilor Jimison.
I just want to congratulate you and thank y'all for beginning and, uh, what y'all doing. Trying to go forward with those places where I was raised up and hold our leadership and magic ship. That area. Uh, my mom said I turned out pretty good, so. I respect all, all we need around that, so I congratulate y'all on what y'all doing. If we can try to show it, we get like a full house.
All right, Councilor Johnson, prayers. Well. I hope we pray that it be successful in this here, uh, since I've been here, uh, two years. Like five, six different people came for us. Most of why, for the dollars to see. Uh, the strong one we had, you know, that mission, of course, they did surveys. A lot more person than they go to the to the dollars to do with their passion. Uh, but my, I don't like, uh, Councilor Jimison, I did also what? All other one, um, baseball, basketball, food, swimming. All I do, I dance, everything, so it's, uh, I hope we pray we can get that going. But I think you need to also, um, I think the, the rock, the board of rock. I think they, I think they own, so that's it. But I think we got to do with this, uh, uh, Maxwell and that board. They don't want to sit, put it on the block. Okay, now when I get to work with, with it on my own, the, the lot on the block. All right, that's what it is.
Okay, we have, we are already in touch with them and they're working with us. And we're waiting, uh, to hear from them, uh, because one of their chairman has been ill. So we hope by the time you all review this, we could have an answer.
Okay, great, great. Uh, and I'll just sum it up. Uh, Brown Rock is always known for its community. Uh, that's where I learned how to swim. Uh, and I have an instructor called Biggie, and Biggie taught me how to swim. And I was good, I was good beat. And so, uh, uh, we know the importance of Brown Rock, and thank you for your work. Uh, if there are any, no further questions, we don't thank you. If you got one, great, that's all.
Uh, good afternoon, Ms. Wamley, and good afternoon, Marshall. Uh, thank you for coming before to account for all this issue. I have been doing some research myself on this on both ends. I know every night and I know that it's, it's, uh, things they want to do. I have did the research on both ends. I have talked to every resident in the area, even most of your home. So when I make this decision, it's going to be for the betterment of that community, not just because who comes in and who wants what. I have really truly, if you take this serious, I have studied it. The Brown Rock thing have helped many of people. And seeing, um, not getting the best use of what we can do for will be a disgrace to the people who raised up in that area, people who have lived through there. But I'm gonna continue to look and I'll continue to research before I make any decision on it. Because it's a very big decision.
Okay, very well said. Oh, great, Councilor Carmichael, we're gonna finish up.
But I, I heard a survey mentioned from Councilor Johnson, your research and that. I'm gonna pick it off the chair that I write you, y'all have looked at us together so that we can have.
You got it. So we should have moved shit. Uh, this, uh, this, this, this whole stuff, I'm back in the business.
Okay, I'm gonna put it, put it calls good, I think, all the time. Just looking at, you know, this cost that was. Okay.
All right, thank you, everybody. Thank you both. All right, well, now move on to our next items on our agenda for the evening. Uh, we have an announcement from Attorney Elizabeth Holly, and she's here to announce, uh, something regarding the E R A program. Good evening.
Good evening. I am Elizabeth Holly, and I'm managing attorney for legal services in Alabama. I came to provide information to the citizens of Selma about two programs. One program assists tenants with rental assistance and utility assistance. And the other assists, uh, individuals with mortgages, paying their mortgage up to $50,000. These programs are free to citizens. You don't have to pay anything to. Resident in the mask. Um, you don't have to pay anything to sign up. Uh, there are two websites. One is mortgageassistanceal.com for the mortgages. Uh, and the other one is E R A Alabama, this two A's together, dot com for the rental assistance. Uh, there is a income limitation for the E R A assistance out of it is up to 80% of the poverty guideline. And it depends on a lot of things, uh, a lot of different factors. But if you go on their website, uh, there, there's a pre qualification tab. You can choose to application. It'll let you know if you qualify for this assistance to complete the application. Uh, they do require, uh, certain documentation and it will give you that information as well. And the same thing for the mortgage assistance. The mortgage assistance program is something fairly new. Um, I don't know if you understand about money that, uh, when you do, you see the council. Money that's given by the government, you have to spend it up or they can take some of the back. The E R A Alabama program lost $42 million because, uh, they had not given a certain percentage of it. So if you have tenant, if you know someone who's behind their, their rent, tell them about this program. It's free. Um, we discovered that there's someone who is charging people to complete the application. Um, Legal Services is in contact with the director of the E R A Alabama and was told that they did not authorize anyone to charge for this particular service. So you have individuals who will take advantage of people who don't have money to pay their rent. So now they have to pay something else for services for you to do. Anybody have any questions?
Question. Can you, can you, Councilor Jimison, is it, uh, Councilor?
Yes, ma'am. How you doing?
I'm good.
How, how, how do you, are you getting it to the citizens of, of Selma that time?
Well, I have, we have it, uh, posted on social media website from Legal Services of Alabama. Uh, we're trying to get word out as best as we could at each offices, we own legal clinics. And I have brochures, I have to say, if I, for each of you, you want some of both of, um, every individual, if you know someone. It's just word of mouth, just like word of mouth spread about someone charging. Word of mouth can spread, and it's a spreading word.
Nothing more happened.
Yes, Legal Services is helping people fill out applications as well, and we know, you know, our services are free as well.
Councilor?
Yes, for, uh, the tenants, if you're a tenant and looking for rental assistance, it's W W W E R A A L A B A N A dot com, which is E R A Alabama dot com. And for the mortgage homeowners assistance, it's W W W mortgage assistance A L dot com. All together.
Very good information. Thank you so much.
Councilor Jimison.
Thanks, thanks. Thank you for a moment, stop that. And council, we got some good information to take back to our citizens. Thank you so much. All right, we'll move on now to our next item on our agenda. Now we're to our mayor's report. Is there anyone here able to present on that from the mayor? Uh, this is, he's first up on the report.
Good evening, Council President Young.
Good evening, yourself.
Um, before I get started, I just want to say thank you to you and the other council members for showing us some, um, support and love doing a lot for our baby sister. So I received the flower and I appreciate it, thank you.
We're still, and we're still, uh, this is your, uh, we're shooting this.
Thank you. Thank you. And on his agenda, we can proceed as according, uh, the only item that needs to be added is an emergency item, and Danielle Wooton represented under item number 14.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, first time, Mr. Hees.
Welcome to the mayor's bathroom, uh, to Donna. The president, young, I say, council members.
Good evening.
And y'all doing this. He is, I'm tired of it on this. Right, I also would like to thank everyone for their, uh, needs, on these challenges from last week. Bounce back and do it just to, to jump on, hurry away. Uh, so we thank, uh, you ladies, travel, and back safe. Man, uh, I think you have a, a pack of rev, revolution for a, uh, for an equipment. It's coming from the, um. So. This is the first of the more.
Yeah, they, well, actually, the, yeah, the two people terms. Yeah, $16,233,7 cents. They have that one there and on the back one, they have one for two giant, uh, tractors. Uh, this is 55 E unit tractor, uh, two M X lift, rotary cutters, 540 R P M C P O. And those are 87, all that together, 87,599,44 cents. Revolution altogether, uh, the total amount of 1,000, 130,000,834,74 cents. This is coming from, uh, a miracle rescue.
The county provided, that's a major rescue plan. Yes, okay. All right, that was in my whole budget, uh, for that goes on. Those, these pieces of equipment was in that, and then they said that they are all, they be loving it. And now that money that we go to classy, uh, to think that unrestricted, so now it can be used for whatever purposes. So now it can be used for whatever purposes, council will be, probably, you're right.
That's what y'all said, off here.
I got you, but, go ahead, uh, Councilman Thomas, and who else had their hand up, Councilman Johnson.
Please, let, let me ask you something. How many, how many zero terms we put over here?
Uh, total, six at one.
Yeah, six at one.
Yes.
And then you'll be, you're asking for two more.
Yes.
You asked for two, okay.
Yes, two more zero term, I guess. Let me try to explain this. You got different sized decks on the, on the, on the board. If you sell for the big fields, law field, the, uh, areas that what we're working in and around islands and on sidewalks and stuff. Here in City Hall, we have, uh, different sized decks. But it's not like we just find all of them same size deck because we're doing different, cutting different.
So these are two different types?
Yes, ma'am. If you look at this, I think it tells you that one of them is a one of them is a sixty inch cut and another is a fifty-two inch cut. We are different sized decks.
And the other, other equipment that you say.
It's two fifty-five, two fifty-five, uh, two fifty-five, fifty tractors, John Deere tractors. And they'll be good in our six foot cut, rotary cutters.
Then we, then we purchase you one tractor, get the other man truck.
No man. If they could put us out of the road, we also.
Okay.
Yeah, the president, I agree.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I agree. Yes, we, we glad you did some, uh, uh, we all be from it there. Well, you, this guy may, uh, cool, cool. Uh, no disrespect to the president. No, I agree with that. But anyway, uh, I was, uh, when I said, uh, I'm in Maxine, I saw a tractor sitting up a ledge and they took three days of, uh, broke down. Uh, had it up, they, 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 uh, they, not yet.
Uh, well, if we can get these, we're gonna have to try. Uh, let me say this as well. I know, I heard some of y'all say it, it's not too long ago. Uh, when we just bought them all this stuff, well, we didn't have anything. And the stuff we had is worn out. Every time I replace a piece of equipment, the other piece of equipment that I'm already running are wearing out. They old. And that's the reason I'm trying to work on leases more so than purchasing this equipment. Because at the end of the four years, you can rotate it and you don't have to spend all that money in maintenance and all that kind of stuff. But if we buy, it's buying, well, not mine, but it's the city's. Then you gotta maintain it. I got a front end loader that warriors on the way down here to check on tomorrow. Well, maybe Friday, well, Monday or Tuesday. I'm probably gonna, uh, uh, Councilman Carmack, I can appreciate this. It's a front end loader, it's probably gonna cost me around ten, fifteen thousand dollars just to even think about getting it fixed. And that's a, a essential piece of equipment that we gotta have. But I can't, y'all, I'm just throwing that out there so you. But I'm just saying, the stuff that we have, a lot of it is old and it's worn out. These tractors that we're running, we've been piecing them together. The deck tops on the, on the boards are ran out and that, that's a hazard. Because if some slot, if I open up under that deck top and hit something on somebody, that's well, that's a big issue, trust me. Are there any customers that I, well, I mean, I agree, because the last one's a big patch. With everything we had, and I was glad people should have reparations for when I come. Had, in my business, because I was trying to tell the president that we need to replace these. And for some reason, she said, no, we need to repair them. These things need to replace, and we had got them replaced, probably over there now. Ended up going in and selling them. I think time went out. This time I was attached with, again, one down the park, I'm sitting there, I'm running on the side road, uh, that I was shopping, I saw, but no, I wasn't shopping. I saw what I got, I'm gonna fit that with. Well, I was discussing before, but you don't need to. Councilman Johnson, did you have a problem?
We didn't have, we didn't have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I pretty much, I guess I'm a grassroots, I'm a moving, count on service, and you wasn't neat, we couldn't write. They ask your question, when they use that side cutter, when they cut those trees back, do they remove what they cut back? Actually, in that morning, and I know Miss Moon was shaking her head because she haven't fit because you sit there.
Well, I'm sorry, ma'am.
I, I just wanna know, once they cut it back, do they remove it and try it clear so it can look like it's still there?
Uh, we supposed to, that, that piece of equipment will most that up if we cut it right. If, if it's not being most, then we, we supposed to come back behind and pick it up. And trucks are supposed to come back, pick it up. But basically what we've been doing lately, uh, this is a brand new piece of equipment. I got a brand new man on it, uh, that's training on it. And we're getting him to the point now where we cut this stuff up, we most it. You don't even see it when it's near. Now, if there's an area that we missed.
No, who's right and who?
Oh, well, no, oh, okay. Blame it, say it. We didn't do that.
Who did?
There was a contractor, it's a contractor in town, couldn't know, said, uh, thank y'all, no foul or something. I'm, well, I'm not gonna put the name out there because I'm not sure, but that's what it says. But I know it wasn't a catch.
So, so you aren't saying anything on who's right?
Not that, not that, because they actually coming down some field road now.
Yeah, so I need to contact them right?
Yes. They got a long, uh, push, push on tractor, and then they living up everything on the, on the right of way or the, or the power line. All right, Councilwoman, I believe Councilman Thomas, move on to the other side. Go ahead, Councilwoman.
The, the, uh, the budget line, I, I know we approved the, uh, off the lines, you know, the resolution. Have we, have we changed the budget, line of expenses, uh, uh, the, 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 I don't know, I don't know about the budget. Prove that included the R, uh,
You're saying expense lines?
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't get through, you know, using the R, but if we change all of the line, put a document up to, to cover, they say, they say expenses, we gotta do this, prove that new budget.
Yeah, I don't think so. I think that we call some of that stuff, you know, undead. I had, you know, trader, liar, what, uh, but, uh, we, we call some of those.
Okay, so this is, is this budget line, uh, what, a hundred and forty-seven thousand, is that prior to the R, the thing incorporated into the budget or, or after?
That is the, I'm answering that. That is the request to put it off the lines of the new proposal.
Okay.
That's the, uh, that's the forward part of the request.
The proposed budget request is this numbers, but, okay. But it has not, that number has not been approved.
We hope that they can, you know, a little bit.
Right, right, yeah. I'm just making sure, we should all vote this until we have that number, but.
Just, this take a chance. Claire, you say, this is going to be taken directly out of the American Rescue Plan files. Because we have not taken a formal vote yet to, uh, do anything with those monies specifically. So this can come directly out of the American Rescue Plan files. That's my understanding. Am I correct?
Well, well.
Well, let, let me, let me ask this too, while she's looking, is this, is this a lease or a purchase?
See, from my understanding, we can't lease this to our purchase.
If you talk to the funds that are reoccurring, we need to purchase them.
If, if, just to follow up on that, if, if this is, we take it correct now. And we need to explain what.
Pursuant to what we passed.
Well, you know, we need to explain what R, the government, you know, is specifically, we can, that's what guidelines as to what this is covered in this resolutions. So we can make sure that we are covered and I would try to say it should be involved in, in that, just to make sure that we have that covered.
Because essentially, the resolution that we vote on requires us to do the resolution for these expenditures, if I remember correctly. So we would have to do, I see the resolution as a command, but we can get, like you did, that you're talking about. And I'm thinking, if it's seriously, we, we, we'll come to you.
Pass around these, those, uh, popular funding budgets. And who's seen, we've got, we've just really, the application of one point six, man, it's not a check. We didn't have a, uh, we didn't have a. And then. Okay. And this is what Mr. Page is doing, basically, is, uh, because we asked for this, uh, equipment. The practical one to change within the next meter or so. And he's trying to, basically, it needs to be a piss portion of the, of the vertical, that's. So he did, uh, those meetings, um, have submitted requisition in the register, so we get this for the price of the fee. They get one for the family, uh, Councilman Harvey, uh, see that they may be passing part. But we hoping that this part will be, doesn't mean, uh, that we need, cannot address the proposal, the full or the part.
So, so if we do change this, will we change this budget line?
I'm following the lead of your treasurer and the, uh, the consultant. And I think that they've done more work on the resolution than I have. And we just need to talk about a little bit more.
Well, right now, I can see it right now, I'm a little bit beating myself, but the, uh, the allocation, if they would ask for, 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 on, on, right now, uh, purchase a hundred and three thousand dollars of equipment, and then purchase two shows later as an option. But like, uh, just before, that goes, goes up into the equipment. And if we waited longer, the private one, or, or, everybody's aware of this, why change? Right now, a thousand, a thousand dollars for wait, or more.
Actually, they were on up, these two tractors are going up five thousand dollars a piece since the last time I got this support. And the availability, uh, according, uh, the, uh, ended yesterday. And he said that he probably would have two come in, but they were, two, if we don't get those two, it'll be twenty-twenty-four, the void will see you in the morning. All right, so let me ask this, where, for a particular items listed in this resolution, where are they in this plan, in the proposal? Do we have, or, we, they're in first place? So these are the two, okay, so that's, can I see another state, a zero turn board? That's not. That's specific. Okay, so these are public works, basically. So that's the John Deere tractors, two, and then where are some of them?
It's zero, and that, and just if you're, you're up around water, it's, it's, that's two of those devices.
And so what you're saying is we're actually adopt or approve this in part. This particular question being made on this, and that we doing it without approving the whole thing yet? Just approving those items? Is that incorrect?
Right, and the Fosca's money is, uh, now unrestricted, and Mr. Gray versus, from Gray, to Fosca. Uh, we just have to inform, uh, Mr. Guy of what we're doing. He's operating this.
What about, if, if we're going to use we, the one point six, I know it's close to one point six. If we've already approved the one point six to go back in, we're not dealing with the American Rescue.
It's a long one.
Uh, but we still have to get this budget approved or we might as well.
No, right, right, yeah.
That's all I was saying.
Yeah.
We need to vote to, to this end of the budget.
Right, the one, yeah, the one to me.
And, uh, with that being said, uh, uh, account number will be created. Uh, so you can see the distribution for the gray version of the rescue plan. Uh, if you, if you look here at the, the account number, uh, the first one requisition is, uh, the account number of nothing about one, right, and then the correction, there should be a two and a one, always one. And the requisition will be rolled out, and then we'll.
So Councilwoman, you're saying, you would be okay if we are able to get information, the purpose in the resolution, saying that we approve this as a budget, not a.
Yeah, well, uh, you know, just like if we vote on something and it's not on the budget, it doesn't get paid.
Right, so we need to vote on something, please, like here, budget.
Budget, uh, uh, that's, uh, a lot of, sometimes we have enough money, but actually.
So we need to vote, actually, please, you know, that's what.
Pres- President Young, I, I, I believe I understand what Councilman Carmichael was saying. I think he's right. We're not talking about an American Rescue Plan issue. We're talking about a budget issue.
Exactly.
And I can change the, I, I drafted that resolution.
Okay.
It's on the mayor's report, but I drafted it. That language can be added for approval as a budget item to be budgeted for the council's approval prior to spending it, and that would make more sense.
Because I think exactly, someone pointed out, once we made this money, uh, approved it, it made it unrestricted. It no longer has to go through all of that American Rescue Plan.
Not this, for the, that you already, already approved for unrestricted purposes.
Correct.
Correct.
Right, so I guess I'm asking a question, trying to get around this, as far as the.
There's one point six.
All right, and, and, and I may not be correct with my terminology, so. So is the one point six, now, do we need to adopt those funds back into the budget for this year?
We have, we have to adjust, uh, the expenses, the expenses on, uh, the, the, the.
So, now. Okay, so I, I guess my question is, the, how do you get? So the one point six goes into, goes into a cash balance.
Correct.
And we have those funds available. So, so the transaction for a lot of the better is, we're expensing eighty-seven thousand dollars about tractors. And the offset is cash balance.
Yes, okay.
So.
Basically, what we're doing is, we are basically transferring one point six million dollars out of the American Rescue Fund account into the general fund. When we put that in, okay, forever the life. Okay, this is a reverse.
Okay, so, so we, and that, and that's kind, that's where my question is. So it then becomes, although it's cash in the bank, it becomes a revenue line for this budget. Okay.
But, but this is such a.
Yes. Everybody, please, go ahead, Councilwoman.
You know, one, one thing that I want to be clear on, I want to, because we had this, uh, they're good, they're totally good. I'm, I'm, will you?
The consultant?
Yeah, the consultant. I was reading up something, you know, they sent it out to all of us, uh, about April deadline. April the 30th is a deadline for our first, how we, how we use this first American Rescue Fund.
We have, Mr. Scott, as I already, uh, worked on, uh, in March. We showed what we've already spent out of that fund, all those that are left on, was the fire gap project. And this, they have sent us a problem with what they're submitting.
And that's why I was saying about this today, by reason why. We have to be on topic because, uh, I was reading, they sent it to the, the whole council, everybody's part, they were training. And I was reading this, and they were talking about, uh, April the 30th of this year is where a report is supposed to be sent in on how we are using our American Rescue Fund. And as of this, no one has came forward, said, they, by, and told us, um, how this money, one point something million dollars, I know we used it, tell me, we, we got reverse back from the, uh, first response. Okay, the thing is that I would like to if, and I would like for Mr. Scott to keep us informed, um, because they are, they, they're still looking on this, this, this file. Uh, uh, how this money is supposed to be used, so, by the sun, or, for April the 30th, I would like, like you just said. A report has to be sent in. So we would like to know what report has been sent in based on this money, what has been spent, sorry.
Or if it has been filed, uh, was opposed, what's going to, maybe I can't, you know, I have, I was. For a worship with them. I, it's how I would like to know.
So, so we have a remaining balance of roughly five hundred thousand dollars to make allocations towards.
But really, it's, it's really the one point six because that money that was spent was ineligible by already in the American Rescue. It was the source issue, that, uh, Gray Hall.
The one eighty, one eighty. So we have the one six. The one eighty, so, we have the one six, and a hundred and eighty, that's one seven, almost one eight, and we got how much, two point one?
If you will look at, can you?
I gave mine away, how much?
Thank you.
I'm just talking about, uh, I mean, how much, the, the total proposed expenditures, is that what you're saying?
How much, how much was our American Rescue Fund, uh, how much did we, so?
Two million, four million.
So, so, to be, and, yeah, so we've already allocated one point eight, so we only got to come up with allocation for two hundred thousand dollars, which, I feel sure we're going to get a camera system at some point in time, we're going to eat up that two hundred thousand plus, so I think we're okay, we just need to make.
We got an allocation of one, no?
Yeah, but as far as more allocation purposes, if there is, it's April 30th deadline, I think we have, I think we did.
What, this, this already has been something.
We've already submitted the first quote, right, I think the reports are, every quarter, the report to every quarter.
So we're, all right, uh, any other questions for, we move on?
Um, the, the item list on this legislative proposal, uh, it's kind of different from what he, he gave us today, so, we have the, uh, three thousand, um, what you proposed today, but in the legislative proposal, there are nine items, that, that, that's kind of like, explaining what the difference is, because I'm moving and cutting here, and it said seventy three thousand, sixty twenty, and this one, here, I'm giving it eighty one thousand.
I'm not buying everything, it's too much, I'm just getting the central stuff that I really really need, uh, we're coming back, I should have got this, I should have run about twenty three thousand dollars left, I want to go to the auction over in Montgomery, I need some, uh, utility trucks, or banking, or whatever I can find, for the low cost that they have over there, to, to, to use with this, uh, remaining money that I have left out of this one point seven, and I reduced, if you noticed, I reduced, uh, I had three zero terms in there, I reduced that down to two, because, like I said, they, the price of these tractors went up, um, they went up five thousand dollars apiece, so I was like, get the ten thousand dollars into the, into this when I first got the first quote, because it was, it was like seventy something, I think, when I got the first quote, with the two tractors. So, what I was trying to do, we used to stay within that hundred and forty seven thousand, and just still try to get some of the stuff that I needed, to make some of the stuff to work, until I can, uh, there's still a lot of other stuff that I, that people need, but I'm just trying to get what I can get out of this, and, uh, maintain what I got.
Okay, all right, all right, council, we have a lot of the items that we have to get to, if there are any questions here, I'm telling you now, please refer those to our council secretary, to, uh, the treasurer, or Mr. Hayes, uh, I believe we answered those questions, I think all we need to do is just get the language corrected in that, uh, resolution, in order to be able to take a vote on that. So, Mr. Turner, uh, once you, uh, make that, uh, correct the language, um, you get that out to us, if it's sent out early enough, we might be able to get it on the consent, if we get it early enough, if not, we'll have to go on, okay?
You will.
So we, please get it on this.
You will.
We got, we got to.
You will.
All right.
You will. Get it running.
We got the proof of budget, so we can get all the information in, that we can ask, okay, all right.
Next thing, can you tell Mr. Scott, dispute contract count, he needs to, uh, he needs to, well, I'm.
We'll ask you through the team.
Yes.
Okay, yes, all right, thank you.
Uh, two other items, these are going for your approval, uh, the training for money, I have two items, a string code, one, a string code, the, uh, we each paid, uh, uh, for, for sign and stuff, the chair, the chair is going to train, what is, I don't know, uh, ten thousand dollars.
Okay, and we, that we, um, as a budget for the show, when, uh, from the last meeting, last council meeting, we approved, let me tell you about, uh, budgets, the revenue from the gas tax fund, and that revenue, uh, total is two hundred, two hundred. There's two hundred and eighty seven thousand, of what was budgeted, was two hundred and ten thousand, and more than the thirty two signs out of the state gas tax fund, we need to make a budget arrangement, so that's a live item, fifty one, six fifty, signs posted street sign, there was nothing budgeted, so we need ten thousand dollars to purchase those signs, and you know, it's not going to be used for the record.
All right.
That's the budget, it's, it's, uh.
Exactly.
The second way, did you know when we're expected to receive that? Probably around June, okay.
So that would be the other one, one, tell me.
Out of that other two point one million, that's. The other two point one million that's got, we have received that.
But I'm saying we already received the first two.
Yes, ma'am, we received one this first.
So we really just about stick at that first two hundred, I mean, two, two million.
It's been allocated pretty much. Okay.
Allocate and not spend, don't.
Yeah.
Don't have a more than that, still got more, more, excuse me.
And allocate and spend are two different terms. But, right. Okay, so we're good with that, everybody, you understand that? Okay, all right, you see what your next item, Madam Treasurer?
I apologize for this being taking so long to complete, but we had issues. This is the economic development academy, and it was stated to complete out of the unallocated, unappropriated funding account. Okay, as I've told you before, there's no such thing as an unallocated uncoordinated amount. So the process of doing that, we got this create a property, we can't fill out, but when I got ready to make the allocation, I realized that in the resolution, what I was told, that the individuals, everyone listed in the resolution, or can, did not appear. I think the double person that added.
Yeah, that was it. At first, we were told, we thought we could have seven participants, and so we voted on seven. And then once we got there, they said, you're only going to have five. And so two got moved, they later on, exercise, they said we could add two more participants. And so that's where all the confusion, originally, when we voted, we had Councilwoman Carmichael and Councilwoman Grissey Thomas, all right, and so then we found out later, we could not have those individuals. And we got there, and they said, you can't have two more, and Councilwoman Thomas opted not to join at that time. Councilwoman Carmichael chose to, and we also added someone from the economic sector, from Dallas County. So we got Mr. Jim Corrigan from the Craigville Airport. So that's how all of this came about, because we were told different information at different times. So that's why sometimes the resolutions don't reflect actually what we intended to actually have. So you're asking that the new amendments, the resolutions, R one ninety-nine, twenty twenty-one, to include the correct individuals?
In, in, in here, it's like a jam.
Oh, so many people ready? Okay, okay, so, but basically, Madam Treasurer? So we are going to, do we have a new resolution that's been prepared?
I, I haven't, but I think you should rescind the previous.
The previous resolution. Since we came in, rescinding that resolution, and creating a new resolution, was to supersede any other resolution or any other vote that was taken, that wasn't placed in a resolution.
I got confused, just, did you explain what you were told to?
There's a lot going on, man, yes, because we actually took a vote and added two people without doing a resolution, and we were supposed to have done a resolution. So, got you, we'll ask the attorney to draft us a new resolution, and of course, in that resolution, there needs to be language that explicitly provides that this supersedes any previous resolution or any other vote taken regarding the twenty twenty-two ALM Economic Academy.
A question on my bill, where do you want to say something?
And I'm sorry if we can include that, that resolution, whatever.
I think in our discussion, didn't we say that we could actually create a line? So this will be coming out our. Yes. Well, that impact, we have some other travel attorney for councilmembers playing for the remainder of the year. And I think when we passed that budget, we were very conservative in the amount that we allotted for our charter. So that may cause us some problems, and of course, we're going to be in that later as well. But Council, what is your pleasure regarding that? And as she said, we still have individuals that are not part of the city government that we are paying for. Mr. Corrigan, also, Ms. Youngblood, and. So we do have individuals, go ahead, Chris.
Let me speak on behalf of that, any kind of education training that is permitted by the branch. We should be able, the trade should be able to set funds out of our general fund. Because if we, if any, if the legislative branch of we is going to any kind of training, and being a part of community, we are supposed to act shortly to defeat whatever needs to become these contracts. It should not affect what we already have in our training, but physically, here, this is a new, this is a new training that's taken, taken on. And you could find, like I said, just to put another cap to add in our budget, this is going to continue to be a part of our budget. We need to find out how much we need to roll onto to go through this next thing, where to do that.
Councilwoman Carmichael, did you have something?
I was just going to say.
Do you have any other? Let me get the comments, it's just loose, and I'm assuming there probably at least one more training.
Yeah, at least.
Through the ALM, at least one, I think.
Thank you.
So back in back.
My, my, my second is not a back.
It's not on. So you're just saying, take your, 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 yours, for you?
Yeah.
Okay.
But, or, or we can make a lot of it, just they all of it.
That's what I'm saying, but go ahead. This is a, this was a special case, because this was a special candidate that was, that Selvin was actually slated. I don't think what you're talking about, so that's, this was a different, this is different than your normal training. This was a plan particularly created for Selvin. I got you, I, where Councilwoman Carmichael was going, we can create a separate line item to take care of the cost for all participants, because it's not just us, it's the mayor's way. It's also, this is just something that's impacted three councilmembers. There's only three councilmembers, and everybody else is a non-councilman. So let's create a line item to take care of the training for each participant under the general government, and it will not impact anyone's travel for the remainder of the year, because there's some other different policies coming up that we have to go through. Uh, this is city seven, seven, is that right, is who?
So it's three councils and four non-councils?
Yes, the names are Mayor James Perkins, Councilwoman Lisa James, Councilman Clay Carmichael, Council President Billy Young, Ms. Danielle Newton from Plankton Valley, Mr. Jim Corrigan from the Craigville Airport Authority, and former Councilwoman Susan Youngblood, representing the SRA. Did I miss anyone? Okay. So are we all clear on that? So we'll have a resolution naming those individuals, and Mr. Treasurer, you need to come back and give you those names. I'll be glad to do it, or you can give it to Councilor Terry. So we need a resolution to the effect of those, naming those certain individuals. Previous language I talked to you about, that it supersedes any other previous votes or resolutions. And then we also need a budget line item that we create, identify these. All right, any other questions? All right, thank you, next item, Madam Treasurer.
Number six, allocation of facilities. Four members, thirteen thousand dollars per unit for ALM power. We have already spent three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in line. We are on six and a half months to do this year. So I submit also, request to, maybe moving three hundred thousand dollars from street lighting, and forty, four thousand dollars from ALM gas, ALM gas from the library, to add to the ALM power line item, as well as to the allocated pipe.
Any questions? Go ahead, we have one second question.
Okay, we. In the budget, in the budget, four hundred and thirteen thousand dollars for ALM power. As of, as of, uh, twenty, we have spent three hundred eighty thousand five eight one. We have twenty-six thousand dollars left in that line item, we are on six and a half months. So please, please. Last year's, our number for revenue was five hundred and thirty-one thousand.
Well, speaking, speaking about this too, everything, I know it's regulated, but it's, it, it may be, we have more use now, because we've got more people here down here doing things now. Using more power, so, and, and obviously, she said is, what we've got, is not enough, so we got to fix it.
Yeah.
So, okay.
We need to look at that.
Yeah.
So, is it expensive to get a car last year as well? I mean, it seems like it.
It looks like it's not going to be a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. It ain't even summertime yet.
So that's.
We have a long day.
We also installed those LED lights, we didn't call them a problem. We do well.
She said we installed, uh, LED lights, and that's going to wait until some.
That's on the, on the problem.
All right, but anyway, what's presented to us is the, the regulations to transfer those funds to the camp. But, Councilwoman Krista.
I'm sorry, that will be eight, I'm getting up for fifteen years. So is there a way to kind of, let's see, how much we need to spend, or we need to live it for, for the year?
Mr. Speaker, let me see where we were, same period last year.
Same year, right, you were.
No, same period, not, not, but, same period of time, actually, we're, we're, we're through April, whatever. That same period last year, how much? The product, we probably need to look again and try, just.
But for now, do y'all want?
I mean, this time, last year, we had a split, same amount, spending now. But I just think we need to figure out what we spent last year, this year, you're going to get back in.
Okay, we'll take it one more time, look at that, did they come back later? So, we'll be next, when do you think we run out?
We're, well, right now, we have twenty-six thousand.
We'll run out this month, on this one. So that's why I was saying, go ahead and go. Council, let me, let me say this, knowing that we are going to run out for the next time, like to do, and also knowing that we want to know some additional information about how much we spent at this time last year, I would suggest we go ahead and go over the regulation that's been presented by the treasurer, and also we provide this information that we requested as well. So I think we still can, we can still, we still can request that information, so that we'll know we need to make an additional, because this may run out, and we may have to make an additional, allowing to play along to, to get the rest of this year. So I think that for purposes of making sure we have the power, we need to go ahead and take. But it's been, any questions?
But, I, I agree, and people need to break it out with this. They, they are putting out a current out, or dress, fifty-four thousand, or dress, or something about. Numbers, I, I have a problem, I have to start, I think we'll see, what that number actually requires.
Right, Councilwoman Carmichael. Her recommendation is to the chairperson, I miss committee. Miss, our treasurer is not telling us about the situation in this area. How will, can you have a recommendation, allow her, you know, to, but we have to immediately go on this. She said, would you look at that and give us the reservation of how much we need to save?
Yeah, I mean, if I could get where we were same period last year.
You could have looked at it, at that situation, now we have to go back and try to.
I apologize for being delayed, not to attention, but it was supposed to my attention when I was going through it. Actually, I do miss being as well.
Well, ladies and gentlemen, with no regard, we have to make a vote on Tuesday, today is just, we just don't know if that's going to be this step regulation right now, or after talking with the county, because I go to, but we know we're taking a vote Tuesday to meet this instance, all right? Yes, sir. Maybe that would be a good work session. Yeah, that's all.
Not some place, this one, the conference, we have their, going upwards, if what is more than, we can answer that.
I, I'd like both suggestions, I would like to hear what's going on, it's such a high degree, but again, we've got a lot of opportunities to go there. So, Mad Treasurer, and Mr. Harvey, Councilwoman Carmichael, y'all, put your hands together. All right, next item.
You have three options for the fine. One option, one, just. People decide one among everyone. Option two, is to allocate the fine to the money, to the people that have a project fine. Option three, is to give one more, there are applications and others, allocated to one individual project. Murphy, you got anything, happy, happy to you. And that, option three, was to give one, they could give one, or number three, money could spend if they please, number one, the remainder will be.
Any comments, questions? She presented us the different options available, item number seven, in your package, out of the trust line, let's propose, and they have three different options that are available to us. Are there any additional questions?
Projects, see that. I know.
Which option was that, that was option one?
Option one, everyone.
We were.
So option, so that would be split up nine hundred and seventy-nine thousand, three hundred and eighty-seven dollars and thirty-seven cents. And that would be split it up between council and.
That's, that's the total, everybody has.
The total is, yeah, it's the nine. And we would split it up even. Yeah.
So, so, we're, we're gonna. Yeah, that, that means. This is how much is issued, one sixty-six.
We're just going to check around, maybe it was one fifty-six, eighty-six.
Right, that, that, just say it's split up, any more, if whoever has seventy, would then have sixteen gold. And if you ever has twenty, would then have sixteen gold, that's the whole, I understand that.
You're saying it's split to one hundred and sixty-six?
That's what, that's what's always, that's what's been done, and, and then, and then I think we have the project. But yeah, I mean, obviously, we got a lot of the capital fact, and if we got project, or, or decided, we can always decide as often, or towards that.
Was that, was that one of the, what he's saying, was that one of the options? That's not. Okay, so what Councilwoman Carmichael is looking at, is that first line, where you see the one hundred and sixty thousand, eighty thousand, and thirty-sixteen. And you're just saying, Councilwoman Carmichael, just take that, split that up ten ways, if there's other problem, I'll go to you, Council.
First, we need to see what the balance is already, or we can, can be accounted.
She wants to see the balances.
To balance it, okay, you talk about.
In each account.
I think we asked for that, then correct.
And then we can split the new money, going to be added to whatever your balance is.
Especially how we learn.
So. So Council, and I hear from the majority, that we just wait on this to get the information that's requested. That we just wait on this to be getting the information that we request.
What, what information you're talking about?
We want to know exactly how much each person has in their account.
Well, you asked her before, it's not first time, you asked her, that counts, we, there was a quarter each interview, what they have in their account.
That should be valid for each person there, because if I got a hundred thousand in mine, it's because I managed my money, right? You know, so, and I'm still, my portion is coming to borrow, because I know, but still, my phone's standing, we shouldn't be, I would have to be, you know? You know, we should, I ain't never heard that.
I think we're making a pull up, no, what we're saying is, whatever, if you got a hundred thousand in your account now, and I have twenty-five thousand in my account, whatever the new amount is divided by ten, or how much can we, can be divided, is it eight thousand dollars, the eight thousand dollars be added to your hundred thousand dollars? That's how we're saying.
We just don't know.
I believe, maybe that was, I wouldn't clear, I was, one of the things I said was, that amount, one hundred and sixty-six thousand, eighty-six thousand, and thirty-sixteen. That's the new amount, and I, okay. So what I was saying was, we could take that new amount, regardless of what amount you got in your account, regardless of what you got. I'm not worried about what you got, I'm not worried about what I. That we take that one sixty-six and divide it by ten equally, and you're not going on after that, for right now. And if, later on, something come together, and we all come together, we can do that later, but for purposes, for the vote that we need to take Tuesday, we divide the new amount, one hundred and fifty thousand, eighty-six thousand, thirty-sixteen, by ten ways. And I missed it.
There's, there's, there's one thing, listen, I'll, I'll think we budget, that's, is this not in our, it's not in our budget or ours? But that's why, that's why Councilwoman Thomas is asking that we get those amounts that are in these accounts into our budget, that, that exists. But we have, we have, it might be.
We didn't take a vote to get this into the budget.
What, what, this is, this is not even a part of the budget, if there was not a budget.
So we had voted to budget this amount at all, we are not voting to budget the new oil lease and public.
Roll over accounts still exist, and that's why, I don't, may not be, but, or, but there are roll over accounts for, for other trust holders.
What's the, excuse me, what's the thing right now, this is something of everybody, since we're not spending what last year's and previous tax is a hundred thousand dollars. So it's not just what we did last year, it's what was last year, previous year as well. So, you know, if anyone, previous chancellor.
So, Mad Treasurer, you think we need to actually, we just, do you think we need to go ahead and budget that amount for each councilperson in the matter, before taking this vote to split up the new? Do you think that for those amounts that everybody has right now, is whatever amount you got in your account now, do we need to go ahead and take a vote to budget that to everybody first, before taking this vote, split the one hundred and sixty-six thousand?
Yes, because it may take a little time to determine the, the allocations from, because nothing.
Okay, so if we come back with us a recommendation regarding the amounts that are in everybody's account now, so that we may budget those amounts. Is that, y'all, I don't follow you, which kind of get where you're going, Councilwoman Carmichael. We, did that come back to the question that Councilwoman Thomas said, now, follow you, that we need to find out what everybody's got? You need to know what you got in your account, not that I need to know what's in your account, but you need to know what's in your account. So let's find out what everybody has in their account, budget that amount. Okay, and then one, create a budget line item for that amount, and then once we do that, then we can come back and do something with the one hundred and sixty-six thousand.
And when?
Yes, ma'am.
Let me see. Twenty twenty-one, I can tell. Right back to this old about, uh, America. It's the same time. A hundred and eighty-some thousand dollars that were there, sitting there, like you in America at the other time. My problem, we're doing the same thing, we didn't get our money. You say it's still there. It is twenty twenty-two, which you receive the money that we're supposed to give for the president, young, that's why I'm saying. So I would like to leave the treasure. To come back, same time, that hundred and eighty-some thousand that was supposed to be created from twenty twenty-one. Become our same funds that we get every year. The hundred and eighty-some thousand, we got that in twenty twenty-one, maybe. We did not, we didn't get our money in our account. Now we got our new money in here, twenty twenty-two, of the, where you, uh, the president, young, recommended was to. So you, will you come back with that too, based on what we get out there?
Councilwoman Thomas, we're saying the same thing.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm saying, you, you, you're talking about sitting here, I'm saying all the dollars that people may have collected through the years. All, so each, say versus, Councilman Johnson has five dollars in there now. We want to know his five dollars, we want to know what Councilwoman Thomas said, she wants to know that specific amount that she had in there. Now, including those dispersals that you're talking about from twenty twenty-one.
We got.
But we, we need to make sure that's in there, that's what I'm saying.
We have this person.
When I say all, that's what I mean, all, go ahead.
And we, can we brought this up in the committee before? Because we, we took a, a person, and then we took a movement for water project. Uh, we ended up spending it all on water project, so the question was whether that need to go back into the individual treasury accounts? Or set in one account, and, and I think we need to read the minutes to make sure how that, how exactly that reads. Or if we just need to make sure we include another resolution that starts in twenty twenty-one, or some year, and it's treasury, and I'm saying this. You really, you really have that conversation, but we, we just, we need to clear up.
Let me clear up everything.
And this is what I was saying, you know, um, we know the head is wrong.
We need to just clear up, so we're gonna close it, we're all on this, so we can all get together on this. But let's play the whole, get into the next one, let's play the whole list, so we can all get. All right, proceed to the next items, please.
All right, I'm afraid. By the way, I still think we need to stack that one and do that downtown research and project together. I still believe that's the best. Uh, we are, we are, but, but, yeah, I wanted, you need to find out how much money you got, and you can't forget. I did, I was just stacking my, I'm fine, I'm sick, I ain't mad at you. I'm just listening. I understand, I understand, we can't do it without a vote, but I understand, but you know, the guy, the engineer, everybody did, so they just, they just trying to get it done. This is the next item, this, uh. Uh, it's a budget amendment for Police Department to return lieutenant slot to the blade. There is a memo in your packet, and Captain Foltz is here to address the issue and respond to the question that you may have about this issue. When the original budget that you proceeded had, uh, uh, it had Chief Cork in the budget twice. He was in, Chief, and he was in the lieutenant. And so instead of taking his name out of the lieutenant slot, the lieutenant slot was removed from the budget. And if I'm trying to get the lieutenant slot put back, so that they can, uh, go ahead and promote the rule of the lieutenant position. They want to put that position back in, get that done, do you have any other question? Ray Foltz, your question. Does he? Yeah. If there, if there are no questions, if there are no questions on that one, good.
Only thing I have to say, it's already there, it's going down, I have no idea, you know.
Thank you, well, it was already there, it was removed when the council did the budget, and then, so we want to get it back in, and that's all. So we will look for favorable consideration on that issue, thank you, council. Uh, on the next item, uh, item number nine, uh, I've had the appointment authority, any comments I'll make on that? Uh, I, I, I'm just on freehold right now, but I, uh, I, I consider this to be an issue of, at this point, and you're reconciling the difference, that needs to be resolved. We'll, we'll work through it. A ten percent restriction, you know what's there. And we'll keep moving, five thousand dollar duplicate, you know what I think. We're gonna keep moving, yeah. Citywide camera solution, that would be, uh, with, uh, council leadership, uh, city attorney, I T. And, uh, uh, Police Department represented by Captain Foltz, and we, uh, I think we have a direction that, we have a consensus on the direction. And, uh, so we're gonna, we're gonna, I, I like it, we have, we have a consensus, I think, on direction, I think. So we are, I think we're moving in the right direction on the.
Well, mayor, how long are we talking about on this camera?
Well, I, I'm hoping.
We have a motion last night, and I'm worried about my field most of the time.
Two, two people shot. Uh, sooner than later. Sooner than later, I, I'd like for it to happen Tuesday. I'd like for it to be this, this, this grand decision, that somebody, don't even want to hope. Sometimes you have to laugh, I suppose. But, but, but I, but I am serious, but this is a very serious issue that we really need to resolve. And I'm hoping that the decision that was made that needed is really gonna move us quickly to a, uh, a legal, moral, ethical, functional, technical, financial solution, for our state. Yes, ma'am, and for you to live, for live. I got you, I got you, okay, we're gonna move on.
Yes.
Uh, Brown by M C A building. By the Y M C A of the city of Selma contract. The Edmondite appropriation claim. There's no way to separate those items. It's a bowl of spaghetti that we eat untangled. Uh, and I'm in favor of us untangling, I do understand that, that we're, I see Miss Wimbley, yeah. Uh, yeah, and, uh, Marjorie is still here. Uh, and I understand that they share, Mr. McTeach is here. Uh, we do need to untangle, untangle this. Uh, we've done some research on it, and, uh, I know that what the group of women that have been meeting, people have been meeting about this. Uh, they are committed to restoring of that property. Uh, they feel that they at least deserve a shot at it. And it's, I read the resolution that they have, what they simply are asking the city is to acknowledge that if and when the Y M C A is prepared to release the building, that the city would be willing to receive. It's not, uh, uh, a resolution that say, you know, we, 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 we don't get it, it's a resolution that says that we, that at least when they have a conversation with the Y M C A, they'll be able to say that the city has given a vote of confidence that we would be willing to help make this possible. And so that's, that's, uh, I'm hoping that the council will, I don't know what the city, you know, all the time.
May I ask you a question?
Yes, ma'am.
I've been looking at all the stuff that came across my mind.
Yes, ma'am.
So. If the city, would that make the city take on something that would probably, possibly, our family now, holding now? In a period when that, there's gonna be no one in to do that. I'm just being, I'm being honest now, I'm working that, you know, things like that, we have the family, uh. When we take on a responsible building, uh, you're staying in right, no, we got under that the Y M C A that, for years ago, with way back. But we will, as the legislative body would have to make a decision, if we take on that, and he becomes harder. That whole structure, it would cost the city, when the city, uh, we have to take on, we're in that, that condition today, are rebuilding that building back up? Wouldn't that lead to nothing to, uh, over by, or being about being out there? I'm, that's what I'm just thinking, I'm asking you, because we, I was thinking, when I read stuff, and I, and it's my mind. So when you focus something, you have to look at what you always want, and what you are adding, all the dishes to the city, when we have, that's how I'm saying this, ma'am.
But that was a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I heard your question.
Yes.
The answer to your question is no.
We would.
No, ma'am, that's not, that's not what this is about. This is about the community effort to do a public-private partnership. These, the citizens are willing to go out and work to try and get this done with the city and the housing authorities partnership and cooperation. Now, what, what the city would be in a position to do, once the city takes possession of the property, at that point, then we would be able to help go out and identify grant funding. And they would be able to leverage the relationship with the city and the housing authority that has an interest. Also, veteran organizations have an interest, there is a lot of interest in getting this done. And the collaboration of all of these entities, I think they convinced me that they can do. So I, that's why I'm saying. Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
Now you explain to us how they're gonna do it, and that's not a different, or they.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am, it, it, it really, it really is, it, it, here's the thing. We have, uh, a couple of others, we can tear it down now, or we can give the community a chance to develop. And if the community can't get it done, you still can tear it down. So why, why tear it down without giving the community an opportunity to develop? That's the only issue, yes, ma'am.
Uh, uh. I agree that taking this all, it will be taken over by ability, and the building itself. And, and we've got existing liabilities, the buildings that we have right now. And, and I'm, I'm not against somebody restoring the building, uh, because I play, I use my basketball, but, I, I enjoy this, I, I use that too, well. Uh, but, but, you know, when it comes to finances of the city, and what's, what's in best interest of the city, I think we need to look at, um, you know, what, what type of liability we're actually taking home with this. And if there's more information that I can speak of, I would like to see it, in writing, and that's another, that's that nature. Uh, before we take a vote, take home such liability, it's just like any economic level project. I, I'd like to see, uh, you know, what we look at, how we capex that, and all those type things, to make sure that it is viable.
Well, just in your, in, in response to your comments, Councilman, uh, the interest of the city is not just finance. There's a passion in the community to do this. And if we overlook that, we are overlooking something that's very significant to the community. The second point is this. Until the city gets access to the building, there is no need to have those other conversations. If the city takes possession of the building, and it is determined that the building is not salvageable, who is in the best position to move forward to tear it down? The city. This is actually something that makes sense. And I just, I just think that, uh, to, to, to ignore uh, this first phase, this first possibility, I just think it would be a terrible mistake for us. I, I, listen, I've been, I've been engaged in this, this Y M C A discussion for generations, for generations. And, uh, this is important. This is really important.
I don't, and I'm going to dangerous, I may be slipping into a handbag, I don't, I don't, I couldn't. What, what's, are the Edmondites involved in this project, or is this two opposing groups, one wide, what, I, I don't, I'm, I'm.
But they can speak for themselves, however. The council did a vote, previous county. And the vote that they did, well, the first vote was to, was to create this lodging fee. And, and Councilman Randolph, you were here, create the lodging fee. Well, it's a occupancy lot, occupancy fee. That was earmarked fifty percent for the then Johnson Y M C A, and fifty percent for the Brown Y M C A, the student. Uh, sometime, and I don't remember the date, I think it was twenty eighteen, something.
Twenty, I'm back the whole time.
Yeah, twenty, that's, that's great, Councilwoman, that's great. Uh, the council took another vote. And in that vote, what the council did was they, they shipped the appropriation for the Brown Y M C A to the Edmondites. And they did it, if not, if I'm not mistaken, for a period of time. After that period of time, then the appropriation went back to the Brown, now watch. So you've got three, you, you have, you have several things going on, you have. Well, if, if, it's, it may not be, okay, it's, it's something, some, it's something like that. Yeah, yeah, the last, I know it went to the Edmondite mission, and there, there's something else that's a lot on. But the bottom line is this, there are three splits to that one. The Brown, the Johnson Y M C A has been getting theirs all along. It, it never stopped, it never got stopped.
It didn't ever stop.
It almost stops.
Hold on, I gotta say.
Hold on. This is not a passion. It is. I hear people in the audience talking, I hear people up here talking, and amongst us, we hear one person talk at a time. So, let's breathe. Let's talk about this, let the mayor finish what he's saying, and then there's a council member that he can comment on, let them comment. But let's also be ready to quit, this is a work session. So there is no votes that are going to be taken on anything tonight about us. Also, the mayor has said it's a lot going on.
It's a lot of votes.
And for some, we have, have an opportunity to go through all of this. I thank everybody for trying to explain it, and give us the Cliff Notes right now. But this one requires everybody up here to go into your own independent review and research. This is just a limited discussion, that's all, but it's not a vote on anything. So let's leave that one time, and let's keep on moving, this is ma'am.
If I have misinterpreted any of the facts associated with this, I apologize, but the bottom line is. But the bottom line is that, as I stated when I stood up here, there's a lot going on with this. And I indicated that these three situations in this line item, uh, they are all entangled. And, and it's a bowl of spaghetti and we need to untangle. And I think that's what I said. And, uh, and so if I was in this statements about the details of this, please accept my apology. But the bottom line is, there is a passion in the community to get this project. And, 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 and the decisions that have been made, and I've sat through and listened to. I've listened to the Edmund Dyke's position, they want, their position was to tear it down. I've listened to these, this, this community group position, they want to restore. I can't ignore it. I'm listening to vote. And at some point, and I came to the conclusion that it only makes sense to give them a chance to develop. All, all of the discussions about the money, we can untangle that, because that's quantifiable. But you can't untangle the passion. So that, that's where, that's where this is.
You told us, okay, go ahead. So I'm just trying, trying to connect dots. So what we're saying, what you're saying, and what we're saying, take a look here. Consider the Y O C A giving the city the property. See anybody group with the help of the city can come up with grants to restore it. Then if they can't restore it, then probably give it to the Edmonds. So we can.
Then, 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 then we can tear it down. That's all. I mean, that's just, this is, you know, just, yeah, I mean, that's, that's it, that's it in a nutshell.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, as you mentioned, this document, you were letting, uh, men and workers, people.
Yes, ma'am.
What the mayor is saying, when I came in here four years ago. You speak this money, maybe you're talking in different ways. And the freedom, do you, you can't, don't be no fool about it. So I'm just saying it right now, with, with the video. The bad person going out the door, one of the, the council people, John Shaw. He put a recommendation to the court. Councilman Shaw posted this to the camera. Does this process of vote approve to restore the lodging tax fee of the Y O C A? That he would like to see the lodging tax are divided between the Y O C A and the Edmonds. We should share both the information. And this was done April the twentieth of twenty twenty. And this was made by the former councilperson, Dr. doing a council meeting on the record. And we have other minutes of, of, really started doing kind of George here, the whole record. So the new captain can look and read all the minutes and what was documented. And that was the last statement of twenty twenty that was made by the former county. And it's, it's in our cabinet, our council meeting.
Councilman Johnson, and then we're going to try to, yeah, we're finishing on this.
Go ahead and come to this for a bit about that. Um, um, but when you started out, when the consent came over, it was really like the mayor said, between Brown White and Johnson Walker. Obviously, it went from maybe over six years, then it changed. It went from, uh, Johnson White, um, I, I want to say maybe the city, because what happened, we didn't take the fund. We had a hundred some thousand dollars in Brown White. And after we did some reviewing and saw so many work that we've done to it, we saw that we're going to never be able to be down to the White. Not the city itself. Um, so we, uh, we got a conversation about Edmondson Mission, uh, Mr. Matt Ridda, uh, about the Edmondson Mission taking, taking over. Now, I'm not sure they can ever be on time, but like she said, we did vote in twenty twenty, twelve, four, it took a while, but I'm not sure. They ever got down, but we did vote for them to get the, the funding. Uh, right, but, uh, right now, like the mayor said, we just have to come back this way and move forward and see what we need to do. I think we do need to give off, and please to see, it can be, 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 yeah, thank you, on further.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Different recommendations, um, this is, uh, we vote the idiot. Can we ask our clerk to pull all, uh.
Relevant minutes.
So that each councilman can have those minutes and make their own.
And especially come from the court. Okay. I, I think that's a great recommendation, Councilwoman Thomas. Go ahead, Councilwoman.
That, that was, well, there's a lot of, so it's a discussion.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Because, because I know if that applies to the contract problem with Y O C A, that was a common. Uh, so, uh, I, I, I feel like this needs, this needs to be done, and, and I didn't want to, based on our, uh. Because there's another vote that we got, you, this number was two year contract. And, and, and we're all, I was up on a two year later, so, yeah, that was my recommendation, that we honor that. Do that contract.
Contract for the White.
For, for the Edmonds. So the White, the White, well, I was saying, yeah, I said I'm not too. But that, oh, the twenty twenty, the, the Y O C A got, that's why they're being paid, but the Edmonds said they got. To talk about the, I, I, I.
Okay. Uh, and for my understanding of that, you've got a couple of issues going. You have several different issues. Uh, one that Councilman Carmichael just said, really doesn't necessarily apply to the resolution that was stated earlier, not in issue group. The Councilman Carmichael is just bringing up a previous vote taken by a previous council. Where it was not built, it was not executed, it was not completed. So we need to complete that. That is separate apart from what you're talking about, taking property and city doing it and all that. That's separate apart. So that is a separate issue, um, that this council can, can act on. Uh, that's actually unfinishedness. If you really want to reveal that, that's unfinishedness. Which can be followed, and, as the council sees it. Now, we've all been told this, the council is a deliberative. Therefore, we have to deliberate. If you don't deliberate in a work session, we can just sound some first time. You have that time to read, you have that time to find out things for yourself. So my thoughts are, we need to take the appropriate time, not a whole long time. But this council needs the appropriate time to deliberate and start pulling some of this spaghetti apart. So that we can know which piece is actual spaghetti. So we need to take time to go through these streams for a better word. And so that's going to take time, that's not going to happen tonight. And honestly, that's not going to happen on Tuesday. Because you have a plethora of issues that have to be voted on on Tuesday afternoon. And this is, let's be honest, this is something that preceded almost over my birth. This, this, this issue with the Brown Y O C A, this has been going on a long time. And so they did deal wrong one day, and they're going to solve this one day. So we need to take the appropriate time to review this and clean up a situation that's been thirty some years, maybe forty some years in the making. This is by of the council. So council, this is what we ran for, to tackle the big issues. So guess what, you've got another big issue that has to be tackled by this house. And so I think we need to take the time for review. My recommendation for now is that we table. And allow the council time to do the research, to get the minutes from the clerk. And Councilwoman Thomas, I appreciate your minutes.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
The reason why I, I know, because I, the reason why I can say things, because when you're elected official, and we, when we get our minutes. I keep my records.
Yes, ma'am.
Because when these things come back, you're supposed to be able to address it. And with the previous council voting on.
Yes, ma'am.
And so that is why I see it, what I see.
Yes, ma'am.
And, uh, it's not a whole of, when you did it up here, it's not a whole of, of spaghetti to them. It's just straight out documents that has been on the record, from the court.
Yes, ma'am. So I think a request has been made, that the clerk, is everyone in agreement, is there any objection? That on Tuesday, we will ask clerk to provide us with the official minutes. Because one council member's minutes are not the official record. So we need to get that from the council. Are we all, we all okay with it?
This is what council calls you.
Yes, ma'am.
Call that for the meeting.
Yes, ma'am. We are.
I'm being so nice.
All right. So can we now receive the comment items? Hey, thank you, council, and mayor, everyone else, for bringing it down, discussing, and trying to come to some type of records. Thank you.
Um. That was an item that we received from the historic folks, I think this evening. And I just wanted to include it as an unanticipated issue. Uh, I think we already have a topic to present at this time.
Thank you, council.
Thank you.
What you all have for you is Resolution R one eighty two twenty twenty one, authorization to approve the sale of our history community mural project. Which, um, is possible through the Alvin State Capitol Arts Grant that we received, and that you all accepted back in December twenty twenty one. Um, next to the, I mean, not the, the sale of my historic, um, this will revitalize as well as the rest of the river does a commission. Uh, we need to get approval of our fifty of progress to move forward with the mural project. So at this time, we are ready to the capsule, um, for approval of the project. I gave a cool, just a, a brief presentation, um, for you guys to see what we have been doing. Uh, through the grant, we have a program that is a partnership with the city of Selma, Selma City Schools. Um, Selma Chapter, Link Incorporated, Art Survive, Art's Trey Taylor. Um, so we went into, um, Pan Hill Elementary School, Art and Hudson Steam Academy, and Selma High School. And we had twenty one, um, structural section, where students researched the history of Selma. The whole project is about the history of Selma from pre-selmen to the founding in eighteen twenty to all of the era throughout history to the present. And so, um, students and the faculty and staff did some extensive research. Um, there's pictures included that you guys can look at of the students in their research session. Um, and then they took what they researched and put what they were inspired, um, and put that into a visual form. Um, and created their sketches and their drawings and their designs. Um, throughout the session, we received over fifty drawings and sketches, um, from the students. Um, and you guys have some examples of those in your packets as well. And you also have an example of what that mural will look like. Um, it's basically going to be a timeline of Selma's history, and it was, the whole vision was created from one student's, um, drawing at Selma High School. If you guys look at this page, it's the second drawing, um, first row, second drawing. And it's really not a great picture, so you guys see the mural finished, but, um. I mean, I don't know the long way about what she came up with, like it was excellent, not just her, but everybody. Um, all of our student, even the elementary students, um, the drawings that they came up with were excellent. And so Mr. Trey Taylor, um, and Mr. Winver Hawkins, who was the artist resident through Art Survive. They, um, are still working on the final design, but you got to have just a, um, uh. An overview of what that design is going to look like. Um, that is going to be located at fourteen Broad Street, which is the Selma Local Center. And the proposal is toward to go the, the entire length of the parking lot to nineteen Washington Street. Again, that's going to be funded for the grant that we received from the Alvin State Castle of Arts. Um, we also had a one thousand dollar cash match, um, which we're going to take out of line item three point six thousand five seven one six oh. You guys have already approved that. Um, and then we have, um, a hundred thousand dollar donation from the Lins Incorporated, um, that will be here on Tuesday to present to the city of Selma. Um, the painting days, the community painting day, so this is not just a, a mural for the students. It's a community project. And so we invite everybody from the community to come out. The first painting day is May the sixth, from ten AM to two PM. Um, the second painting day is May the thirteenth, and then the public unveiling event is going to be May the twentieth. Given that this great council will approve this project to be painted on the wall of the Selma Local Center. And so on Tuesday, we ask for your favorable vote. If we can make it through, uh, the red win, I know we're going to be everything for you guys.
I go to church.
So that's all.
All right. Thank you. Council, any questions about, um, this, uh, grant?
Any questions? I, that, that's awesome, I appreciate it.
That's great.
Thank you, just looking forward.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. All right. Any other items?
If you don't like that, might be some more money coming.
All right. Thank you.
That's another source of a lot of money for the Y O C A project. I, uh, want to thank council for making certain every item that we presented, the only consent, doesn't two separate.
I know we said a lot.
He's in that stage.
Come on.
I, I do want, I, I do want to, uh, I, I, you know, I appreciate the council deliberating, looking into this. This switch, this life, I think that's all the citizens want. It was the decision about it, but again, at the end of the day, um. I think we need to really be careful with this one. And really not look at it just quantified. Look at how this will affect the heart and the sun. I left off in two thousand eight, Y O C A service. Pool was open. That was senior citizens facility in there. There was a lot of work going on in there. Even the first, first check that I ever received. That took social security out from the Brown White. And that's, I'm not the only one who feels that level of passion about what this is about. So I just really ask you not just look at this as a numbers game, because that's not what this is really about. This really is about restoring. Our motivation and morale.
Thank you. All right. Justice Board. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, Mr. Turner, thank you. Mr. Turner, before you come, we did ask by for B M S S here. Is there any objection in receiving with, uh, that report first, and then going to our Justice Board? Is there any objection?
Thank you for that.
All right, uh, Stephen?
Yeah, I'll be.
Go ahead.
Yeah, we had, we had some technical difficulties on lending done, um, and so we had to. But, but B M S S pulled you to that meeting out, and I just, um. We asked him if he could come back tonight and answer questions, uh. Pretty much as it relates to the, um, finance department, and I want to make a, I want to make a comment, I want to make a point stress of several points. What we're dealing with is the finance department's policies and procedures. And I think we need to, I just want to reiterate, because I know the legislative body makes points and the executive, um, body makes points. This document is a joint effort. Okay? Because the legislative body is responsible for policies and the executive branch is responsible for the procedures. So it takes input from both. So we have shared ownership of this document, and I, I think, um. Stephen and B M S S has done a really good job of presenting us with a draft and formulate questions. He worked well with the treasurer, um, in that office and trying to pull this together, where we got a good dual branch document that we, that we can work on. So I, I submitted a couple of questions that were submitted to me, um, to, um, Stephen about the policy and receiving manuals. Um, I'm sure he'll be happy to answer any additional questions that anybody may have on. So, um, I'll just kind of turn it over to Stephen and see if he's had a chance to research any of those questions or anything else that I want to. Thank you, everyone. or anything else that I want to add. Thank you, everyone.
Uh, thank you, Councilman Horrible and Council President Young. And I'll just maybe repeat what I said on Monday night and, and kinda some opening remarks, uh, because the Zoom quality wasn't, wasn't that great. Um, but I appreciate the opportunity to be here with all of you. Uh, we appreciate the opportunity to, uh, compile and put together policy and procedure manual. And, um, you know, credit to, uh, to Ms. Terry and her, her whole department for, uh, working with us, her interviews, uh, through, you know, looking at, at, you know, kind of detailed procedures. Um, yeah, how they, how they, how they go about their job and, and documenting all of that. And I think this, this, this effort and this manual has been a great, um, a great exercise. And I think it's going to, I mean, it's gonna satisfy FEMA's request, it's gonna satisfy, uh, you know, the auditors, uh, when the, you know, the financial settlement audit is done. And then, and it's also gonna give a, a good document, uh, to work from going forward. Um, you know, to, to make tweaks and, and as new people are added in the department or as policies change, we can, you know, we actually have something we can work from. So again, credit to, to city council, to, to Ms. Terry and her department. Um, we did receive some, some feedback, some questions from Councilman Carmichael. Uh, the mayor, uh, and, uh, Ms. Terry and I, we all met today and we, um, I'm sorry, can everybody hear me okay? Am I, am I coming through okay?
Yeah.
Great, good, okay, thank you. Uh, so we, we met today, we, uh, we reviewed, um, Councilwoman Carmichael's, uh, comments. We also reviewed, uh, uh, Councilwoman Thomas's comment from Monday night. And, uh, I think we've got some good, uh, I'll say, uh, you know, made some edits and tweaks to the procedures, added some things in. Um, I'm happy to talk through those or, or, um, you know, the mayor and, and, and Ms. Terry, I, I didn't give them a chance to really review my proposed changes, uh, based on, on some of the comments. And they actually had some comments too, that they wanted to, uh, incorporate some things that they had called in, in additional review. So, um, uh, we could let them review and then circulate a copy, I know, back to the, to the city council. Um, if, if that, if that works, or, or, or you, you please tell me what I can do.
I think a red line would be great, Stephen. And, and when I say red line, it's for everybody to understand, we'll say, we got a document, a draft in, in process that is a pretty clean document. Um, Stephen will essentially make additions or strengths or anything else in ready so we can follow along with, as we work. If we really finish, finish it up, we're just working on that.
I don't, I don't, I don't necessarily like the red, I, I highlighted green. But if, if that's okay, but yeah, Councilman Horrible, I'm happy to circulate that again after, uh, the mayor and Ms. Terry has a chance to, you know, uh, again, review and make changes. And then, and then again, I'll, I'll, you'll see the highlights in green to, to know exactly what we, what we tweak, what we added. Uh, because again, I think it was a good, you know, very good comments from, from the council, council members that I named earlier. Um, and again, we, we, we're gonna continue to tweak this thing, and I hope the finance department continues to use it. And, um, going forward, uh, yeah, I will say the one, one area that we probably won't have, um, addressed or, or, yeah, I feel good about is the procurement procedures. Uh, FEMA actually called me on Monday, a couple representatives from FEMA, and they would like the, um, the city, the grant department, um, to go back in and, and, and give some more, I'll say, give some more color on the city's processes and how it lines up with federal procurement requirements. And so, we're gonna work through that, uh, internally, um, you know, in, in, in the finance department. So we're still building on that, but the, the, the comments and things from the city council, I think, will be addressed. And there's a, yeah, I think been good, had a good, good meeting today, um, with the mayor and Ms. Terry.
Does anybody, anybody have any follow-up questions or any additional questions that they'd like to ask Ms. James? Do you get to hear one?
Yeah.
Did you hear the Councilman Carmichael tell you?
Yeah, I think, um, I agree. My, in, in no objection to the mayor, no matter. This is like, I used an example, where Trey came forward and told us about the power wheel, I'm missing the wheels. And where we had come up with a, uh, we have to make a decision on, on how we use it to keep the power going in the car. That was the only thing that was, had happened where I was reading, you all know how I am. And when I saw it in there, but now I understand, I, I go along with things right. Now I understand, but he's, he's the head of house executive. But all our bills and things are supposed to be paid. Our, our mayor is supposed to make sure that it is going through, uh, our channel. But back after Trey came forward, then there was no, that we were in trouble. Going out of station now. So that was some of the things that, there can be one thing that in there we could throw you off. But when you came back and just said that, we all know this. So I have no problem with it, but the only thing I would like for is that, um, it's gonna change, it's gonna look at something. I like, the only thing I'd like to be is stay within the legislature branch that quite a bit slated. But that's the only thing I, that's all I have, that's all I have. I have no, I read his whole policy. I agree with what you just said.
We're making progress. It's been a great exercise. I mean, it must be. I don't think anybody's. So, we, we want Terry, if everybody's good, we'll keep going. Um, Stephen, thank you again. We appreciate that B M S S hard work, um, and your expertise. Appreciate you, uh, hanging in there and being with us tonight, uh, outside for a Monday night.
Is this the gentleman that the city paid our, of B M S to give us a, a yield, a, a hand of the report? Is he someone, so his process and his policy is the end of the report?
That's right. That's their, it's Stephen, uh, mayor and, and Stephen. I think that's pretty much the end of the scope of work in this, in this policy and procedure manual. That's pretty much the end of it.
Yes.
Can you, one thing I ask you, one question I gotta ask. Why did B M S put the, uh, budget into the system when, when you had the employee that works with, probably is here, that were working with the trader and that the state was agreed that they was gonna put the budget into the system? And we pay, you were paying, we, the city was paying this employee to work with us in here and give you strength. But then when we got to the end, nobody was putting it in the system, but the, the city of Selma has spent a lot of money. So that's, that's my only question.
Stephen, I don't know if you know where the detail of that situation, uh, but it's my understanding. And again, you know, uh, at the time, uh, the B M S S representative was working on budget. That was never a feeling that the budget balanced. And we could not enter an imbalanced budget into the computer system. It needed to be a balanced budget, and that's what the shell was. And so, until we got together after, uh, we hired a trader. The trader went in and we were able to use that art money to balance the budget. Then we put the budget into the system.
We did that to be something.
That was, so that's, that's, uh, that, that was.
And, and my last question, the total bill. This is the end of the road with the cost. And I would like to put that, uh, the total bill that we be paying for B M S, including all three steps. And gave us, we had, this is the third step. So I would like to put the city of Selma to know the total amount that we paid B M S to accompany you this year. And we actually talked about all the scope of work that they did. And I would like for the city to know the total amount that we paid this company that they will, they will finish this. I would not wait until the end of the rest of the.
And the council table led to be provided, counsel.
Okay, that's all I have.
Yes, ma'am.
But that's one of the citizens, you know.
Yes, ma'am.
The power money that we spent.
We'll make that a token, uh, uh, let it on that. Because again, B M S S, Stephen, thank you. Uh, I did get a chance to see him breathe, uh, highlighted notes while sitting here. And, um, I'm, I'm ready to move. I'm ready to move.
Thank you, Stephen.
Thank you. Alright, thank you very much. Alright, now, alright, we still have a lot of business to handle, and we're going to move. Uh, let us move, uh, efficiently, uh, for remainder of this meeting. Uh, let's go to the attorney's board. I think he has five or two items. Let's go through those. I think we got those items this afternoon. So, um, it may not be until afterwards yet. So, Mr. Turner, you don't have to read the entire document, but, um, you can just briefly go through what's being presented. Um, and, uh, we'll take it up from there. If there are any additional questions that you have between now and, uh, Tuesday, refer those to me. But because we've got an opportunity to look at this, you probably will have a few questions.
There are, there are five items.
Alright, Chris. Uh, let's go ahead and start on.
Okay, the first item, there are, the items come from three departments. The first item, books office, the next three from the tax and license division.
Okay.
And the last one from, uh, planning development. I mentioned that for this, those items can be discussed by those individual departments immediately, but I can't without a trouble. Big Ten Network Feminine Employment is item number one of my attendance. It has been provided dated in March the sixteenth. Their request is for filming in July. So I want to congratulate them for getting in here in time. There are still several steps that need to be taken. The first thing is that they've gotten, there are two hundred two hundred and fifty dollars paid as a copy of the check, uh, the invoice attached to the report. They are supposedly filming. They say it was about a hundred people in attendance. I think that's cash approved. I'm not sure who, what percentage, but that's cash approved. And they're saying their purpose is to come to create a feature documenting the student athletes visiting to Selma in Montgomery, which I mean, imagine they'll leave here and go. Their filming is insured, the organization's activities are insured. And the name on the insurance cover is Fox News. I guess that's the Fox News network that we watch, uh, sports and a lot of those stuff. Yeah, questions?
Any questions? This is standard, we on our station.
When are we gonna increase the, the?
We have revenue committee, seven, revenue committee meeting is scheduled for April twenty eighth. That's the lead. Exactly, but, but regardless, we do a big, big grant five in hand because we want to pass, it's gotta be important. It's about to take a while, but yeah, let's do it.
I have no one to, it's Resolution R one seventy six dash twenty one slash twenty two. It's an avenue contract. These three upcoming resolutions, as I already indicated, from the tax and license division. Uh, resolutions are all concerning clients and remittances reporting. Uh, the resolution for beer wine is one seventy six, that's twenty one slash twenty two. Uh, the resolution itself, very brief, indicates that you have to start to do what I'm asking you to do that the tax and license department is asked for it to be done, includes contract with Avenue Insights and Analytics, L L C. We already have some five contracts, I believe, with Avenue. This would make a total of eight. They, Avenue would receive one point nine five percent of the total revenue collected for remittance processing services for the commodity beer wine. The attached document, I review, it's pretty standard for all the breaks for Avenue and, and, uh, most other entities of this type. The key is we have some flexibility, not only providing input with getting reports back, and we have sixty days to report any problems or questions about their remittances and reporting. And, uh, we have the option to, uh, have them come forward to counsel by eight thirty.
Okay, so go ahead, uh, Councilman Thomas.
Is this, I, to be my issue, is this something, uh, new that, uh, what are we?
I was just gonna say, uh, just to try to give a brief little summary very quickly. These are three separate resolutions, uh, for Avenue. We already do business with Avenue collecting our own tax. This is somewhat unfinished, this is Councilman Thomas, because we talked about this before. We talked about Avenue in addition to what they're already collecting for us, sales tax. We talked about it in a previous meeting when we had a review. We talked about them actually collecting our beer and wine, sales tax. We also want them to collect our alcohol sales tax. And we also want them to collect whatever the last was. Uh, thank you, guys. So we talked about this before, and what the attorney's done is attach the contract. This is pretty much the same contract that we have for the other, uh, sales tax and other things that are related for us.
It is, it is definitely.
It's a role play contract, but he just put in the resolution, and we know that from the proceeds for each one of these, you can read it. One point nine, one point nine five or seven, although for each different tax, correct? And so, Councilman Thomas, this is one of all this, but you got any more questions?
No, I didn't, I didn't just ask you, I haven't seen you.
Yeah, because they collect those other taxes, but we talking about, we want them to collect this other tax. Any other questions? Still take the time, counsel, uh, to review. They say it's on your own. But, uh, it's same role play, same contract, we can prove.
And one's already eight, one seventy seven dash twenty one slash twenty two, this for gas. And one seventy eight dash twenty one slash twenty two is for alcohol.
Okay.
And those are the three items for that's the last. Item number five, my report is a general agreement between the National Park Service, Selma to Montgomery National Historic Trail and the city of Selma. Uh, this agreement is also nothing new, but what has been changed is some language involving the at one point assumed to expire agreement. And the idea is to extend this six months with an option to renew it six months after that. Uh, there were also a couple of other items that were sent to me and and attached to an email I would like in the business. Who, she, she, she explained to me that the main thing is that they want to continue this treaty. The, uh, artists' agreement shares constantly operating maintenance. They're gonna designate a staff liaison purposes of discussing and resorting coordination matters and that's a serious disagreement. Establish operating procedures established and provide for administration of the Selma interpretive center dissemination of public information regarding the trail associated historical resources. Belting interpretive and other debate public issues. Jointly managed the Selma interpretive center for the duration of this partnership, the name of Selma interpretive center and the buildings associated with it shall be the Selma interpretive center. All interpretive exhibits inside the Selma interpretive center property and signed related that to the property and responsibility of the National Park Service. It will ensure that neither party will wreck, this agreement will ensure that neither party will wreck or place upon the Selma interpretive center property or permit the wrecking of or placing upon the Selma interpretive center property. Any monument, monument, tablet, other material except as part of the interpretive exhibits created by the National Park Service. You got a reason.
Okay, I thank you.
There are four other bullets, that's all I need.
Okay, there's four of those stories. Alright, I'll, I'll.
Well, no, there are, there are four of the bullets under that section. And the N P S agreements, what they're agreed separately to do, including, uh, here as well as the city's responsibility. They're outlining the bullet form in three more pages. Uh, the modification and termination of the agreement was, under my way of understanding, a key change. Because to allow it to expire would be more trouble than agreeing to extend it on an ongoing six month basis with the option. Because to allow it to expire would be more trouble than agreeing to extend it on an ongoing six month basis with the option of renewing it or something.
The way I understand it, uh, termination, modification, termination clause, because there are five. And in an article, it said each party can actually get out of this agreement upon a city day, it really helps actually get out. So, Council, uh, what you feel a little liberty is, we do, we'll have to have two months, but we do have the option to maybe get out of this, and no cost to hide apart. That was my understanding, okay, Councilman Thomas?
I don't know if you can, yes, no, it's not, uh, this is, several months ago, I was looking at it, but, it's a good question.
Did you say sale?
Sale.
Sale.
Yeah.
Oh, exactly. I was, I was, I was, there was something else.
The. The transaction is in Washington. And.
Okay. I understand.
There was a little. They, uh, they, they were looking at, they, they went all the way back to look at the. Transaction that, uh. That happened when the city originally took possession of the property. And they were looking at some details, and that, so, when it's in Washington, but it is still, it is still on track.
Okay.
Exactly. To the sign.
Yeah, yeah, they needed to extend the contract because the one that we have is, is expiring, and they just need to extend the services until, until our contract.
Have, have the environmental service, everything, is all that, a little bit of everything.
They, they, they do, uh, they're going on, they are handling all of the detail on it. And so they, they are gonna come back and just give us all that, or else we just wait.
And as you say, the terms stated in the, uh, record, he said that this contract has an extension of six months. With, at the conclusion of those six months, if still it's not the sale, or still not finalized, then we have the option to renew. So that's the intention of what the screen is, then also they have to change in the termination, my, my face call, the article. That's what I, okay, pointing out, if you agree, the agreement to extend it on a six month basis, yeah. Please also continue reviewing for yourself before Tuesday, as you will, you take this up. We'll take it on Tuesday, so take the opportunity to review this document. That's wonderful, thank you, excellent, thank you for your brother, thank you for your officials. Let's move on now to the other items, but this items for the council, let's start with Councilman Chris Thomas, appreciate his first react.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This is the first item, uh, I'm, I'm sorry, it should be about twenty one here, I have a question. And I, I'm just, we keep putting in workarous to this, uh. This way, we, we just made an update. Although, my first line, I have a question, one, we're here, and there was a house that I backed in July. And we have that, that update as to, uh, what was done, or what needs to be done, and, you know, for the modest property. We've been considering workarous to be, to get an update, and I'm requesting is an update.
Oh, you're sure, okay.
I'll have to look at it.
Okay.
I, I'll make a point to look at that particular one, but you know, uh, I don't know if it's still expired, that prediction is moving. I would think if I got it done, then, then probably, then the offer will be done, you know, who's starting to pay, Terry?
Well, it was placed on, um, the list of modest property at one point, and it was taken off.
It was taken off, and, you know, why it was taken off? I don't know, yeah, I, I, I would look at that, please call me or remind me or text me, so that I can do that. And I was, the, the, the.
I was talking with Mr., this is my number two, I spoke with Mr. E. Thursday today, and he's trying to get an update, but, you know, the meeting will take so long. This is my, on Woodrow Avenue. And I, I know you know of that issue. And they're waiting, just so everybody knows, we're waiting on, um, he's waiting for it to kind of drop. Their nominee has been laid, so we're anticipating, hopefully, prayerfully. The end of the meeting.
We need to drop weather, and not only drop weather. It has to be compacted more than once, and, and before you put the pressurant and the asphalt, and the asphalt on top of it, it's just a construction cycle that needs to go through. What happened was, it was prairie soil in there. When they took the prairie out, if the prairie was just not gonna work, so they ended up putting red clay in there to, you know, to, to, uh, just to stabilize that area once they re, recovered. But unfortunately, it has torrential rain that happened, and all the red clay washed down the street into both driveway. And so we, so we, we did mitigate that, we went out and used to care that situation. But it's just one of those unfortunate situations, and so we're still working, and we still trying, but it's just needed, I think we end up with about five or six days of drop weather this time, I'm not sure. I forget, but we all working.
It, it's, it's been a long, long process, though, we're, we're still asking those relevant in that area to, to still kind of be patient, but it's probably would need to finalize some kind of, um, and then they go.
Okay.
Um, number three, this is just a request, um, to the treasurer, uh, I know that when, Miss, that was a court of email. Uh, it appeared that emails that you're trying to send her has been going to, uh, email address that was, um, established by the city. Which we're not, none of us are using our email address. So, if, if we can get those email text to, um, theselcitycouncil@gmail.com, that will help her get it quicker, because we, none of us is using our email. So, um, that's just a request to the treasurer. That's all.
Thank you, let's move on to the next one item, Councilman Thomas.
Oh, that's my question, not even.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, the, the emails, what, what is going on with that? Are we gonna, are we gonna alleviate that? Are we gonna look at? I could ask some other quick questions.
Well. Let me, let me, uh. Yeah, I directed out, remain consistent, give him back.
Okay. Okay, so it's the next, uh, three items, Councilman Jones.
Yeah, um, the time, you know, I, you know, I gave you time, so we got a lot more to, but, um, update, uh, what we can do to move forward, um, closing parts of the plot. Avenue behind the funeral, did you say park, I mean, plot, sorry, they are, okay, plot, I'm gonna close it all. Um, Mr. Miller and, um, you know, they, uh, all, and they agreed that they need to close off for several reasons. Um, I have funeral service and a lot of people walking by there, a lot of private facilities, now that one guy ran, his car, uh, his shed, and it actually, no, it's still, you know. And they got that frame, uh, that, so, but I just wanted to look at it, and, and he just asked, can we close it, the city don't feel comfortable about it, you know, and I'm gonna go, but I need to move forward.
And I thought you were talking about a portion of street instead of.
A portion, all of them, that's, that's my. They'll come out like, and then they'll make a riot, uh, to go into the project, and they, they.
That's sad.
A sand, it doesn't, they're totally ready, they're coming back with a lot, trying to hold that part off. But they need to, they come out like, Philip, you know, you're probably tracking a problem, you know, and make that right, but it just won't be a big deal. If, if they go ready to block, but still make that up on the island, the shed, if it comes in, they just want to block that part off. And so, uh, Brandon, I'm pleased, though, there was a suggestion, and Brandon, I told my friend, uh, the council and the mayor, let's see. Maybe one good chance, and be like, let's look at it.
I can't go tomorrow, but I can go Monday. I can go Monday. But the traffic division is important.
Okay.
No problem with that, no problem. Not saying that we don't go, but if there's a lot of people, she can get it done, but I need to move on, man.
Oh, oh, I was trying to, I was trying to, I was trying to, I was trying to get questions going.
This, I'm just, because I'm just trying to bring this picture, the process to, um, you know, different, uh, and, um, everybody that's back, and we got a plan. That, that, that's the step, or, uh,
You say, I don't want to vote with the, 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 the fact that we're getting through it in on the poll.
Yeah.
If I'm clear of what you're talking about there, two of Jason's property, and one is the business and the other one is the housing, you know?
Yes, yes.
But it does affect the surrounding property.
Yeah, I just, we are, that's, that's, yeah, but they're only two Jasons, that's what I'm thinking about.
You operate.
All right, as one here, B, you're gonna get with the mayor and the county official, see if this is something that's feasible, if it is something that's feasible, then we'll follow up with actual rock sauces, try to, they hold our game.
The other one, the whole, but he stands for the transfer, it's, um, back in the last administration, we voted to name, thank you, Terry, uh, I need to put on, I need to process a minute, I'm moving forward with that, um, um, Terry Jackson, move on. Let me, thank you, we will, we thank you. Wow, wow, I can't turn around. Terry Jackson. I'm sorry. You're right, and I need, uh, uh, by the next, next meeting, uh, I'm trying to get, um, council process.
You said Terry Jackson, who would have been?
Okay, yeah, that's been voted on two years ago, and it's on move on here, I think, throughout the board.
Right?
You gotta play.
I think if he, he has to be processed, then he can get on, but he didn't.
Okay, he can get a vote, I can get a vote, we got lots of signs.
I think he's gonna get it, but he's gonna get it.
But I can make sure that any other change, I want to turn to the county, but let's get it on that.
Right?
Very good, the other one is, um, uh, the previous,
Did you say the previous council?
Yeah, but we still have to move forward, and they did vote, they voted on it, but I just need to run through the, thank, I'll ask, uh, and finish it all.
And we probably need to take a number vote down, since, since that process changed.
The process.
Since, uh, since I'm in the previous.
It, it depends on whether it's changed since twenty seventeen, but, but it wasn't before twenty seventeen, but.
Uh, I'm not, we, we do like to get a name file, yeah, I'm a good one.
Because this council voted on the change since we made it, so whatever take place now has to follow with the vote taken, not this time, so that's right.
I agree with you, so, but the idea is I wanna follow the rules on that.
I know.
Okay, uh, the, the other one is, and I think the mayor, yeah, but anyway, the previous council, they called, wanna know, but let's, the update is on the Jane Perkin, uh, on that call, uh, we, uh, I, I, I need to see, we should give an update on that, she gone, uh, on that, because we did have some planning, uh, in that, to do the fog, I think they had started on that administration, when I was doing the day.
It took planning and development, planning and development, planning and development.
Planning, that's right, I just need, um, to give an update on that, because like I said, and we didn't say she saw twenty five thousand, I was in there, but was in work, you know, and that.
And, and I understand your point perfectly, that's one that should be directed to the mayor and the rock.
He can get it too.
Help me with that. There, the people up there, well, I mean, you don't have to do that, okay? I'll be, I'll be, that's why I am a freshman, that's why I'm a freshman, uh, moving forward.
But, but I, but I have procedures to follow too.
I'm standing, you said, I don't want to press, and I told them the same, so.
I'll, I'll make sure she gets that word in.
Okay, then, I, I'll do this, uh, the last one is, um, uh, the mayor, he may not have the business, but good. Uh, well, several years ago, in two thousand and, I want to say six, uh, the mayor, uh, he's got a baseball association to open a baseball field that, uh, we have things that not have, we not have dugouts out there, uh, they gave a dugout, when we played ball, we got, we, we, and I didn't find ball, we had, we didn't, but then dugout, we didn't even have freshmen there. We have, uh, 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 a special senior, and, uh, thank the councilwoman, uh, former councilwoman Janet Gumm, and the mayor, uh, Perkin, gave us all that. We, uh, came over to group, like, he said, baseball association, Jerry Jackson, president, and we, all school, we brought school, we bought the P A system and everything, the city had a little small cell out of their building, they gave us a uniform here from baseball, so I'm happy, mayor, we not happy, city, they don't do anything, the Lord give us permission to use it, we'll front, will you, we'll front, you know, um, we'll front to the equipment, we can update the dugout, we can replace the long campaign, we can do everything we always had there, we just want permission from the city, for that move forward, uh, with the, uh, uh, start back a little bit, I think, uh, so we won't be coming to the city for no funding at all, uh, taking permission to use the field, uh, we already have P A system, we put school, that's a model, that's all I needed.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right.
Man, it's, it's for council, I really, we gotta fix two or three.
Yeah, what we've covered, we've covered the V M S S, the review process, thank y'all for allowing, stating a little bit of a ladder on that, I appreciate that. Uh, I, I'm gonna do question thirty nine, approval of funding to resurface land fair, um, normally, for, draft, actually, um, but to have some minimum of, of service there.
Okay, Tuesday.
Yeah, change that.
Okay, all right.
We need to say, we, you say we want to re.
With my mother, we, yeah, with my mother, yeah.
Cause you have a young lady, it's time to get into, they was called, she keep talking about it, she wanted to.
She like, uh, she probably likes to know this.
Yeah, they live over there.
Okay.
All right. All right, let's move on to this, item, uh, resolution for Veterans Park, Councilwoman Janet Thomas, you have the next five boxes.
Yes, I'm okay, we, we addressed the, uh, attorney, we did this year, and I thank you for, uh, we, go back, we need to go ahead and move what was the first, uh, resolution for the, uh, veterans, for the park, and also, we had some, we paid for the, can you find out, uh, Mary, can you find out on public work, that was, well, that was, that was some money that was paid for, that left to be, to be placed on there for the veteran at their end of the park. So we need those, uh, those, uh, words placed on there. All right. It's a lot of, well, it, 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 the revenue council, we need to find the, and the curtain, I will pull it out, and it's, it's that, that's what I can, so. The minute, the curtain, the minute, she give you every back, and hold it up, the curtain, it's in the revenue, the revenue council.
So, Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Uh, we request the minutes for previous houses, uh, from the clerk, uh, so we're making that request, an objection, and making that request, and, uh, so, and the clerk is in attendance with us on Tuesday, please, you please make that request again in her presence, so she'll be here either, so you make that request at that time, and then after giving those minutes, then we'll receive a warning, okay?
We ask for those, Dr. G.
We have asked for a report, we, oh, so we have made requests for our office.
Very guilty Tuesday night.
Okay, if we've already asked for them before, they will just, uh, send an email to, uh, Ms., uh, Heidi, our clerk, uh, to see, uh, where we are on the set, since that request already been made, thank you, next.
All right, my next thing is the, um, the project, you know, I, I do, with, Mr.,
Scott?
Mr. Scott, well, Mr. Scott came to us first, you know, but there's a lot of money out here for the city sale, reject, and, uh, grant, and done, and there's so many things that we need to do in our, in our, they sent us a list of money, funds, that, for anything that came from government K I, laid out all of the money that we have, that we need to help us in making, and Scott told us that there were ten million dollars out here, that we would have to come up with a, a project in our ward that really that needs to be taken care of, and my ward has about seven projects, it's about five, some serious projects that needs to be taken care of, and it has been too long, too, too long, so I did some research, uh, and I could share this with everybody, this is a puzzle off of, uh, September thirtieth of twenty twenty one, it tells you extended government funds and the late emergency assistance act, it tells you, well, money that we can get assistance, uh, to things happen from data hurricane that we did not get cleaned up in ward seven, uh, it's still there, and I'm L L Anderson, well, and I have to be taken care of, I was waiting, trying to get it done, and nothing done, was turned in, so I would like to, uh, ask our planning developer, planning developer, to look at some of these grants, that, that, the funds, this money that's out there, that she can help, help us in our ward, uh, get some of these things done, or you can share with us the, God, because it's really needed, and it's needed bad in ward seven, we have to manage problem, drain problem, and it's the only thing we need to do is get, uh, planning developer is the one that, you got somebody there to, uh, file for the grant, for these things taking care of, I'm gonna look on that, I'm gonna move on this here, cause money there, just on this year. My next thing is, community grant, uh, community, uh, garden grant, I would like for us to vote tomorrow night, because there's a whole lot on me, I hope in the plan of garden, I can't plan of garden, I need, um, the money put back, so we can get the, the, the plants and the seeds, so we can go in and, and put it out, the treasure said it was not in our, uh, plant, but it has always been in there, it was a plant that came from the show.
Miss Mount Treasure, you want?
It was not, but you, but you still have your money in bank, but I don't know, or it was not included in the budget of the council, well, I want the council to vote.
Mount Treasure, can you, in written form, give me the appropriate language that needs to be passed, and I'll add that to the consent agenda, so, Mount, uh, Councilwoman Thomas, the treasurer's going to email me the correct item, that means the motion, as we should see, and I'll place it on the consent agenda for Tuesday, all right? Thank you, Mount Treasure, I appreciate your assistance.
And my next is, uh, the other topic, I got.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, my next thing, this is important, I would be bringing the contract, as a very, I have only one patient, I have four locations in my ward, I would be, let's say, right, in that area, in a drying area, for the city ward's post, that's in a neighborhood where I'd be able, um, purpose in that area, I don't need that, I'll sit, but it makes our neighborhood remain, it, 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 it looks bad right now, so I, as a representative for that future, I have to do what I need to do, you know, that, the more our neighborhood look bad, if we start having war crime, we didn't have enough, so I, I got to do, I got to move on. So I bring that point, my next thing is, I did, I want to put this on the question, but I would like for the mayor to tell us right now, that our engineer, all of us, it's all of us have a project done, restoring, we just have a tank, that's going on, just to be about four feet, they came in here about a month ago, and oh, but somehow we, it, they have a move, can you give us something on that?
I, uh, talked to engineer, disease, they would tell you that I, you know, raised, or, or wholly for us.
Do you need to?
Uh, about that very issue, and you should see some movement, I, I've instructed them, that if, these contracts are not done in the time specified in the contract, that I fully expect liquidated damage provisions to be executed, right?
Okay.
Those are instructions. I do recognize now, that we got, that have some real serious supply chain issues, people really having trouble getting material from this work, and that's with the grass cutting, councilwoman, um, with McDonald's hiring at thirteen, fifteen dollars an hour, Walmart hiring at fifteen and seventeen dollars an hour, we can't keep people to cut grass at nine dollars an hour, we really got to address this paint plan issue, if we intend to be able to hold on the folk just to cut grass. Now, I'll just tell you, that's where we got to revolve the note, I, I, in fact, it's, it's a problem, it's a problem all the way across the board, we are having serious, serious trouble, uh, being able to retain employees, uh, the, 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 the H R director, I can't remember the details of the numbers, because I just got a lot going on, but, uh, that, oh, I mean, it was like, what was that number?
Thirty three hired and twenty, it was left, thirty three hired and twenty four left in the last month.
In, in the last month, and that number is exponential when it comes to this, this twenty year.
Yeah, if I can remember, we had asked for a spreadsheet.
I did, we did the spreadsheet on the paint plan.
Right, but we had an updated spreadsheet, because the, the problem was, there was only six million dollars worth of, um, salaries in that spreadsheet, work that was done, it's awesome, but the budget, the approved budget,
Oh, yeah.
is nine billion and something, so we're missing, we're missing, we're missing some, some stuff.
The, the, the spreadsheet shows actual employee, the budget shows needed employee, so that's probably what the difference is, we just don't have, uh, you only, in that spreadsheet, you're only seeing the actual positions that were filled.
Right, but what we need to do in order to approve raises, we gotta see, well, just in, for, to pass the Auburn plan, we gotta see the effect that it would have on what we approved, which is nine billion dollars, and then, then, once we do that, we can, we, I mean, I think everybody's prepared, actually, if we approve the Auburn, they're going, it's gonna raise those positions up to probably, I don't know, twelve, thirteen dollars an hour, the key is getting that spreadsheet, we get that spreadsheet up there, we can get some of this stuff done.
So, so, so I'm clear that what you're looking for is the entire budget, see, see, when, see, that spreadsheet only covered, because the spreadsheet was showing the variance between those actually hired and those, so if we.
We need to add in whatever the budget, we've approved all these positions, we need to see the effect, we gotta see what it's like to approve it. Add what we said.
So if we include the budgeted amount in the pay field of vacant positions, would that give you the picture that you're looking for?
Yeah, yes.
It not, because it, in, in, in those vacant positions, you would have a different number, you won't have actual, you'll have budgeted, you understand what I'm saying?
That's right.
But, but that's okay.
Right, because when you, I, I, when you ever get this, well, when you ever get a spreadsheet, I don't know if Mr. Prost did it, or, who did, or we had it, um, when you add the, the page range, it'll add what, that, even though there's nothing in that, that spreadsheet, it's pretty much, we can just add those, add those positions.
Okay, I, you go, the whole, but it, okay, but it, but we really just see if it wanted that way in the show, after.
It was, it was, we're in great, great state, we're looking for that, right?
Well, we hope so, okay.
Okay, Councilwoman Thomas, the council.
Yeah, my last, this is my last, uh, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
These are the, in the chairman company, I was supposed to, but this is the last, but that's what you, you're with, uh, because I, I put through the last one session, I told you I was called, and I asked the attorney to look at the, you know, we, 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 we wrote today, um, the date for, I don't know why I'm not reading, y'all know, the Bernard, I'm sorry, the Bernard Bobby, you know, I asked this body of counsel, I brought your attention the last week, that I was asked, they would like to use the trails to pay, and I asked our attorney to go pay a way back, under, this event, we came to, uh, naming the street, and we came, or to making that pay a house, but from my understanding, and I really understand, B, this case, uh, serves a purpose of holding tight seat, but somehow, uh, I, I.
Tables and chairs.
Cause, you know, it's everything, anything deal with.
In this case, no tables.
But, yeah, well, but I look at it, but you can turn, that's why I asked you to come back, give us, because we have to have a decision that before we leave. It's the same way I have to be there, that they'll have, and I'm not, I'm not a attorney, but I, but I would truly come out as I was sitting, and tell, cause you did us a, a, a.
So she's a big review, on whether or not, uh, she's a big review, on whether or not us using tables, private tables and chairs, to the committee for that day, does that, or does that not violate the public purpose doctrine? And if it does not violate public, purpose, purpose doctrine, then I assume, Councilwoman Thomas, you will make the appropriate motion to allow me to.
I like to go back, oh, like you said, well, I know the mayor's executive day, like some said, I don't know why people don't understand the law, say, if the mayor say we can give, they, they, they can give, but I say, when they come to me, I say, I can't see a give, I said, cause you go back, exactly what the law said, and that's how I operate, I know God was, was there in front of me, so I told the person, I say, I can't get any of that, I'm not going to visit, so I brought to the, the mayor and all of us, cause I like to stay with, before the, the, the.
What's, what, what is, is, is.
It is gonna be here, it has every event, is the first event, well, I think what it's, they.
Probably for the banquet, seven versus.
Yeah, banquet, we have a big banquet, all of these.
And they may need them for that parking lot, for the, that day, I don't know, but I'm thinking for the banquet.
It's at the G M.
The, oh, the, the G M, seven versus, I think, I, I had spoken to him, so I'm just, I'm just.
Listen, I, let me tell you something, sure, I'm owning, but it, it was dressed to me, I really expected a whole lot of people in town, uh, the tables are there for two hundred and fifty dollar donation, so, and when they have a, a banquet like this, so you know, this, this is a big day, so I'm thinking they gonna have a lot of people in town, cause it's like, uh, uh, you know, we do the, on the twenty ninth of this month, meeting the press conference, it go from, oh, down, that three, 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 oh.
Okay, so, so in the interest of using that type of, why, let's, uh, let the attorney do an easy two, and let's follow up with a conversation, um, later, I think you can do that, thank you.
I just want to make that, and also I'm gonna go back and change the lack of control, we can't do contracts, citizen and my ward, this whole type, this president, L L again, he said we gotta wait till the trades come back, we will, we will cut it, we get those licenses done clean out, so I got my money too.
Thank you.
I will, yes, you. Uh, that program, I think, you need to kind of point, because that's the plan, because we can have some actual specific workers, and then it's all spontaneous, so we need to, and then the mayor is not allowed, I mean.
I think they made the question.
They didn't make that.
So they don't, it's another way to get shit himself.
We need to find a specific.
That's why I said, yeah, give it a second.
What, what I'm trying to say is, before we start doing this, that, other, let's get the exact question right, and then go from there, so let's make the request get right, so then we can stop off on this.
There you go.
Okay.
Thank you. She just called two of them.
Right.
I brought it, it's happened, it's my.
And we gonna bring it right, okay, now, very quickly, uh, items, I have on here something on this items from April the seventh, uh, Mr. Turner, we're still expecting the case that support for by May tonight, we're looking forward to that, so that we can find out all of the pending litigation, that's serious there in hand, we need to know that. Uh, also, keep in mind that we will, uh, there will be requests for executive session on Tuesday, uh, regarding illegal that, coming from the attorney, so that will be presented to us on Tuesday. Okay, so we will have, will take care of both of those in the same executive session.
Can I, can I bring what, the recommendation, I want to do, do some, for that test.
I don't know what you're bringing, what are you bringing?
I want to bring the recommendation that, uh, where they, that came before the bottom of this council, where, uh, you recommend to end this contract, uh.
You have all right to bring whatever motion you believe necessary, okay, thank you, all right, uh, so let's keep that in mind in regards to the litigation court by May tonight, then also, the municipal court applications are in, I'll begin with the council secretary, and set up a date for those interviews, that will be led by the, uh, public safety committee, so we'll get together sometime before we sell this secretary on that, um, and everyone should receive those applications already, um, the secretary will go available, the city debt, I think, at the last work session, Mount Treasure, uh, we asked, you know, supervisor for us, you know, they had to get a model of the base going on, so if we can get that in your course, that would be great, uh, so that we can find out exactly the amount of debt that we're coming in, uh, yes, ma'am, uh, then the revenue committee, let's remind everybody, we're asking everybody to come to the revenue committee on next Wednesday, April twenty eighth, uh, and we're gonna do that at six o'clock P M, that's gonna be the revenue committee. I'm sorry, Thursday, okay, Thursday for twenty eighth, we'll do the, uh, revenue committee, uh, we're making, asking the tax collector to be there, uh, and then we also have the treasurer there, uh, to help, uh, the mayor, uh, and those members of the revenue committee, which are Councilman Randolph, yours truly, and Councilman Harley, and so I hope you, Bill, Bill, I think you're on the, yeah, you're on the. Six o'clock, hey, it's open to the public, and remember, we're gonna be first addressing the increase in the film for me, and also, not, not a lot of new ordinance that adopted, see what we need to do with a new ordinance, so we're gonna also be looking at adding expedite fees in there, if somebody needs this within a couple of days, a week, they are increasing the fee, so we've discussed everything, that's our first revenue measure that we're taking.
That could be very bad.
That's a bad day for you.
It may be, but I'll, I'll definitely.
Maybe virtually?
Possible.
Okay, all right, all right, um, so let's, let's keep that in mind, with that ball movement, because it's like we saw tonight, we got a big request from a big institute for a bill for me, and we know they can afford more than two hundred and fifty dollars, so we need to work on that. All right, let's remember the L M Economic, uh, Academy, Councilman Harley, what is that, maybe schedule, the one for us Montgomery?
Uh, third, forty eight.
It's up in the day, during the day.
Yes.
Nine thirty, two thirty, Montgomery, so those of us that are part of that committee, we need to be in Montgomery from nine thirty till two o'clock.
I think it's two thirty.
Two thirty, and that's gonna be in Trump, all right, let's remember this, I'm speaking before, I have this introductory meeting on May the fifth, at five o'clock, let's remember, Dr. Narh, I get a, uh, remember the person, I'm scheduled for April twenty ninth, at noon, here in the council chamber, we're asking everybody that can be there, this is the first, and it's going to be, uh, the event, so we need everybody here, Dr. Narh. We're asking everybody that can be there, this is the first, and it's going to be, uh, the event, so we need everybody here, Dr. Narhakhi Day, press conference. And the actual date on May the fourteenth. Let's remember the word of prayer, they'll be using the chambers, May the fifth, eleven twenty P M. Uh, I think several of us attended last year, councilwoman Thomas, councilwoman Thomas. Uh, let's try to help them, uh, help that group, uh, who needs to compensate with prayers of the Lord. Uh, we also, I think we have a discussion there, yeah, uh, that much information. So I think that takes care of all the items, uh, update on this side, committees, are they any committees that need reporting? Any committees, if, if the mayor's still here. I do want to pause this question in the back, and then, uh, does anyone know what's the update on the convention system? Did it last, update on convention system?
They're starting to gather, they're starting this week.
They start this week?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to get an update, because citizens have been asking. And so I'm just doing that for citizens, that question hasn't had, the decision started, uh, in the appropriate areas. Um, and then maybe we can get even a more formal update, that's exactly what is going on as far as what's expected.
President, President. We're actually, literally in the process of getting the written update. On what's exactly the scope of work it is.
Okay.
We have an agreement, but it does not recite the actual step-by-step scope of work items.
Do we have an immediate, uh, that's made a name from the actual?
No, the, the, the contractor and Chris Ritchie of Spire are in contact with me, the built, public buildings director. And Mr. Lee, the city inspector. We're reporting to the three of us to the mayor, but we've asked for a copy of the exact statement of work. We've had three or four meetings with them to go over what they plan to do, but we don't have it in writing yet.
Okay, and if we all have anything updated within another month, just be expected.
We should have something updated within the next week.
Okay.
Maybe not by Tuesday, but.
Well, if we don't have anything within the next month, I will be glad that up again, because people are asking.
Understood.
Uh, thank you.
Go ahead, councilwoman. That, too, must like, any insurance, place, bro, for insurance, about some good.
It probably will, it probably will.
Well, the citizens, in the words of councilwoman Thomas.
And I just want to give to man, if I owe her, I'm thinking everybody know about the disability act of nineteen seventy-five. When, when we have open meetings, open club meetings, and without, uh, L L is not. That, oh, you know, none of us supposed to have meetings somewhere else, so because of people that have disability problems can't come to the category and come up instead. So on this, you know, it's been a year, it's been a year. And I just want people to realize, people are looking at the dogs with the way they function, with, they, they can't come up instead. So we need to find out where are we at. We need to report Tuesday night with this government, to the citizens of state.
All right, and now that you brought this to the premiere of the council, uh, publicly, what we all need to do is, um, if this problem continues to persist. That we don't know when we'll have the elevator, it becomes an indefinite period of time when we don't know, that this council may need to convene and discuss alternative measures. Because the time has come upon us, we hadn't realized it was a year, but that's a long time. So we need to maybe address those, so we need to be compliant with all public laws. All right, the other, um, committee that you report. Council, thank you for attending tonight, thank you for your patience, thank you for your diligence, thank you for your work, thank you for all the city employees, the help the mayor. With that said, there don't need, no, there'd be no further assistance, because the y'all is getting fans adjourned.
Yeah, I love you so much. Yeah, I'm not having fun. Yeah. What about my phone? I'm sitting here in here, I need to keep my log. So we can't get, if this is a moment.